On record.
Call to order, the City of Lincoln City, City Council Meeting, April 28th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Agleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norekis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Public for which it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize to the audience and the viewing public out on cable and Internet that we've had some technical difficulties, so we are starting a little later. Counsel, I first need to amend the agenda, if you would, allow me, please. Need to add, under item F, Special Order of Business, a fourth item regarding the intergovernmental agreement. That's all right? Okay? And...
Excuse me, Your Honor, does that also include the resolution? I think there's two.
But the resolution is down there, 19, and...
That's the resolution corresponding to the urban renewal.
Right.
But the additional agenda item has a resolution as well.
Oh, attached to this? And so with the, we'll do two resolutions, so we'll add a...
2014-08, I believe.
Okay. Another resolution, then. All right. Do everybody get that?
Yes.
All right. Let's go, then. Comments, comments from public, or from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. And we have Sherri Levitt, is it? Hi, come on up, and all you need to do is state your name, and...
Hi, my name is Sherri Levitt, and I'm here to talk about House Bill 3460. Hopefully, you guys all got my message, but I'm here to talk about the situation that it is. There's 60,000 cardholders in the state for medical marijuana that have their cards currently, and it's growing at an exponential rate. In Lincoln County, we have 960. I had my grand opening at the Wellness Center today. In Lincoln County alone today, we had 36 new applicants, only four renewals. Historically, and I've been in business for five years with the Medical Marijuana Clinic, we had 5% new patients to 10%. Now, we're averaging 80%. The reason for this change is there's many elderly people out there, and people that are sick, people in hospice, that don't want to go to the black market and shouldn't have to, and worse, don't know where they can get access to safe medicine. Now that the state has declared dispensaries, they have safe access, it's a stable atmosphere, and the testing that the state has imposed and specified, it's more stringent than the food we eat. So we're giving people safe, organic medicine. I'm here to educate anyone who will listen about the different alternatives to smoking. I want to get rid of that stereotype. There's capsules, there's lotions, there's salves. No one who hasn't smoked before should never have to smoke. So by having the dispensary in town and safe access, people have the ability to get different alternatives. My personal story is 10 years ago, I was diagnosed with MS and was in a wheelchair for nine months. They said I'd never be out of the wheelchair. I got mad, a friend came to me and said, "There's this type of oil. You don't smoke. You take it in a capsule." Within four months, I was walking with a walker. One year later, no walker, and here I am today, in better shape than I've been in in 15 years. I would not be walking if it wasn't for medical marijuana, and if, I have been waiting for 10 years to be able to share that gift to people that I did not have access to. To not allow a dispensary in town would be a disservice to the citizens. And if you guys have any questions for me, and if we are in town, I plan on holding meetings at the library to educate the general public on what medical marijuana is about and how it can help them, and answer any questions anybody in town may have.
Great.
Any questions?
I don't see anything. Thank you very much for coming forward. Debbie Williams. Debbie, can you pull that microphone right into you?
Okay, can you hear me now? Hear me now?
I don't know.
I've been asked by a few concerned citizens today to make a couple of comments. One, the ordinance about the health and safety issues that is being looked at today, they feel is beyond the scope of what was originally commented on in public hearings, and therefore they did not give the public, it did not give the public sufficient opportunity to weigh in on their views on the health and safety issues. Two, that the document, this document that has the ordinance in it, was not readily available to the public because of a glitch with Adobe and being able to download that, and I guess the, somebody at the city knows, they, a few people have reported that, and therefore sufficient time has not elapsed to receive at least written comment on that ordinance. And then I wanted to say a couple things about evaluating the loss of value on a property. As you probably all know, there are three methods to evaluating the value of a property, one being the market approach, which we're all very familiar with. You look at different properties that have sold with the same basic amenities of the house you're looking at, and you price a property based upon that. Another is the cost approach, which is replacement cost or the actual cost of constructing that property. And the last is the income approach. And most of the VRDs would be looking at the income approach on evaluating their property, and therefore looking at the loss of value on their property if they could not use it as a, as a vacation rental. At the hearing, no, at the working group, there was an amount or a figure that was bandied about that maybe there would be a loss of $25,000 on some of these properties, but I hesitate to differ with that and say that there could be several hundred thousand dollars worth of value lost on vacation rental properties if they are not allowed to continue for what they were originally permitted to rent their properties for. And then I think that we should not really be looking at these changes without looking at the economic impact that it's going to have on the city and its residents, and the exposure that the city may have to not only those Measure 49 claims that you may receive, I'm not sure if you would, but also to the burden that it's going to add to adding additional staff to vet all of these issues. Who is going to inspect all of these properties? You know, we have one ordinance officer right now, and is that going to be enough to do inspections on all these properties, based upon what's, what's in the health and safety issues? And so, and there's a couple of other things in there. One is limiting days, or limiting the quiet hours from 7:00 to 7:00. These were typically timeframes that were used for construction noise, not just residential, you know, noise. If you have a barbecue in your backyard, you have to stop at 7:00? That's a little bit, it's just over the top. And all of our permits did say previously 10:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. That's what construction used for their cutoff time for construction and hammering and that type of thing. With all of these factors in view, I respectfully suggest that the health and safety ordinance be given more time for public comment, at least in writing, and that evaluation of the economic impact be at least looked at before you make these kind of sweeping changes in something that the city has been using and the residents have been using for many, many years. That's all I had to say.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Plummer.
Thank you. My name's Carolyn Plummer. My company is Pacific Retreats Vacation Home Rentals in Lincoln City. And I too just want to make a brief comment about the VRD issue and what transpired last week at the special council meeting. And several things were troubling to me, and I felt the need to come and express myself on them. I've said many times that the consensus group has done a lot of the work for you. I think it's a clear reflection of what the public wants, what the people of Lincoln City want and need in managing their vacation rental economy, is what it is. And last week, the conversation between those of you on the council started out discussing how to best treat vacation rentals that would be in a perceived no zone, and how to be fair and equitable and still give people an opportunity to follow up on their commitments that they had made, and, and I listened, I was very, it made a lot of sense to me. All of a sudden, the conversation switched to how, and this was after possible limitations on the number of nights that would be allowed to rent in a, in a perceived no zone, then all of a sudden, the conversation switched to, how about limiting them in R1 zones? Well, R1 zones are all over this city, and a great number of the, or a great area of what we on the consensus group considered a logical yes zone are presently in an R1 zone. So the consensus group never, ever, ever even considered limiting the number of nights that a home could be rented in an area that should be welcoming vacation rentals. Also, Mayor Anderson referred to a ribbon of area, a ribbon of area, that would be a no, a yes zone, that would consist of the oceanfront properties here in Lincoln City, and I believe he said one half of a block back. Well, that is totally contrary to what the consensus group came up with. We went block by block, some, in some areas, lot by lot, to come up with an area where, again, vacation rentals would be welcomed, they would be encouraged. There are many of them located there now. They, they don't have a huge impact on their permanent neighbors in the area because there's been no revocations except one in 14 years. And it just seems like a giant step back, and I was very dismayed to hear the tack, or the track that that conversation took after the first, the first conversation about how to, how to treat people in no zones fairly. So I just had to express myself. I, I think if you go back to the consensus report, that's what the people want, and that's what the economy and the city needs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else not get the opportunity to sign up? Especially those who know the process of signing up. Welcome, Don.
Thanks. Don Williams. I built the home in Lincoln City. I filled out every form required. I paid every required fee. I told the employees of Lincoln City exactly what I was building and what I was building it for. I relied upon their advice and professional opinions as to how to proceed with its construction and its lawful use. I applied for and received every permit and license required by the city. I hired contractors and tradesmen that were desperately searching for work at the beginning of the recession, because I received approval from the city to build a home for a specific purpose that was no mystery to anyone that asked. This home is a beautiful addition to our neighborhood. It benefits not just the people that reside in it, but the people that helped me maintain it. I built the home. I followed every rule. I relied on city employee guidance in its building and use, and now I'm sorry, I invested in Lincoln City.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that didn't get the opportunity to sign up?
Hi again, everybody. My name is Randy Mallett, and I'm here to talk again about the medical marijuana. I'm hoping that you've all had time and that everybody received my emails. I tried to do the best I could to answer, you know, the questions I saw brought up here at the last meeting. For example, there was a question about the federal rules towards medical marijuana in the states, and so I had sent the Department of Justice, the memo they sent out on August 29th, I sent out a link to all, to all of you on that. I've really done the best I can to try to communicate with all of you guys, you know, my intentions, much like the last fellow was here, I have from the beginning. I worked with the planning department to pick out a location that was suitable according to the state and, you know, worked within the city. My application for a license to do business here, there was no mystery there either. It's, you know, medical marijuana facility slash dispensary. Just want to reiterate, you know, only after getting that license did I go forward with spending money to, to put a business together. I do want to work with the city, and I hope, you know, since the issues seemed to be mostly about zoning, the last meeting, I'm hoping we can do something to exempt perhaps the people that are here if you do decide to do a moratorium. I'm hoping against that, but, you know, if the issue of zoning is just too great, you know, I'm in a general commercial zone on 101. I did that on purpose. I didn't do any mixed-use zones, I didn't even consider anything but general commercial. For those of us who would fit the guidelines that the city could foresee imposing, I would strongly urge you to exempt us from any moratorium. As far as, you know, discretion, this is a sample of what would be leaving my shop as far as the packaging goes. You know, it's just a nonsee-through, childproof container in here, so you can't see through it, it's childproof. And, you know, it's, let me say, it's very discreet. It's, it's also, it's been said, you know, before, but it really is, the dispensary here will fill a need that, that the community has. I, I lived it, and I think it's, it's an interesting thing that most of the people that support the medical marijuana have either experienced themselves, like the gal that was just up here a little while ago, or lived and seen it for somebody else closely. I know that's what it took for me to become a supporter, but it becomes undeniable once you see results. And again, we're not talking about recreational use. That's, that to me is a truly debatable issue. That's something the city would have to sit down and discuss. Is it good? Is it bad? How do we feel about it? But when we're talking about medicine, and that's what we are talking about, I would urge you guys to allow it to, to go through and allow us to serve the community. I just can't justify standing in the way of medicine. That's, that's my feeling on it. If anybody has any questions, of course, you know, I'll be in the back, call me up.
Great.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Randy. Again, anybody that hasn't had an opportunity?
One more thing, I just, real quick. We did sign up two weeks ago to speak, and we signed up to speak tonight, but for some reason, we're not on a list. That may be something to look into technically on your end.
Oh, on the, through the online?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So just, just a heads up on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello again.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Kelly Mallett, and, again, that was my husband, and we wanted to talk to the, speak on the issue of medical marijuana dispensaries. And some of the concerns that I heard last week were in the details. And I know it's, it's kind of funny today, I know last week we were up here with our children, unfortunately, but they're beautiful children, and we were just talking about laws and rules, and I realize that the older we get, the more rules we have, and I can understand how difficult your job must be, the details with the VRD and with the dispensary law. And this law is very comprehensive. It took months and months of deliberation. As Randy showed you, the packaging has to be in a nonsee-through, discreet, discreet way, and that's required. It's in law. And there will be annual verification of all of the facilities and permits. They will have to literally come and visit the shop. I don't think there's any other business that has to have their license renewed by a state organization. So it will be, I mean, it's very, very important that you realize, if we don't follow the rules, fines in the hundreds of dollars, and, you know, nobody wants to see that. Also, it was mentioned last time, recreational use could become legal in November. Well, it was also voted on last November, and it failed. So nobody here is, we're not, well, I'm not thinking about that. My husband's not thinking about that. You never know what could happen. So this is just medical marijuana, and I hope that you realize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Okay. Will you field a question?
Of course.
I'll start it with a statement. If I go to a doctor and he prescribes something, there's a dosage that is prescribed and the pharmacist gives you that dosage. How do you do that when it comes to marijuana? Because I know the dosages change.
Right.
And how do, how is that prescribed?
Well, you know, at this point, you're right, it's not that somebody, that a doctor would prescribe a certain dosage, as we would see with aspirin or any other medication. However, it's not, people aren't going to be using medications blindly. When you get the ability to use a medical marijuana card, when you've sadly met the criteria, you have some condition that allows you to get this card, then when you go to the dispensary, by having everything tested in the way that it is, you'll be able to see, okay, there's 16% THC, and there's 5% CBD. Well, depending on your condition, this may benefit you, or this may not be a good idea. I know that marijuana is used a great deal for people with seizures or MS, epilepsy disorders, and you don't really want high THC, you want high CBDs. So by having it tested in such a way, and by having everything marketed, you know, you're, it's a retail environment, you get to choose what you want. You get to see upfront what you're getting, so it's not like you're going to your grower, and they're saying, "Well, I think this is, this strain or flower," or whatever, and, you know, you're just kind of going blindly. It's kind of like, to compare it to alcohol. Are you taking a shot? Are you drinking a sip of a wine cooler? By having it tested and by knowing what you're purchasing, then you can intake, you can choose how to intake appropriately. And so that's the benefit by having it legal and regulated.
So do you, I don't want to say prescribe, but do you do explain to people the, the different effects and the different ingredients as to what they, what's best for them?
Absolutely, and that's, you know, there's not a, a lot of information on that right now. This is obviously a, a growing area, but like I said, with the THC and the other, the other chemicals that are in, you know, Randy talked about it last week, and he knows a lot more about this than I do, but, like I said, the THC is the one that gives you more of the, I hate to equate it to alcohol, but it gives you more of a, a delirious feeling, more of that kind of a nature.
Aha.
Whereas, yes, and then the CBDs are the ones that are going to be not felt like that as much, but they're going to work on the other systems. So, yeah, he can definitely tell people, okay, this one has 22% THC, so you may not want to go with this strain. You may want to go with this one that's 12% THC with a 16% CBD. You know, so he can be able, he can advise you, but then it's kind of, at this point, it's kind of trial and error, I suppose.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else I saw a hand?
Hello, how are you? My name's Eric Edwards, I'm a...
You need to get right into the mic.
Sorry about that. How are you? I'm here to talk about the whole medical marijuana aspect.
Your name?
Eric Edwards.
Eric Edwards.
I served in the military, in the Navy, for a very long time, have massive PTSD, went to war over in Afghanistan, and then came back and ended up that medical marijuana was one of the only things that actually completely helped me 100%, and it was more of the aspect of the CBD. It was not a THC. I do not like to get stoned, or high, or whatever you're, want to call it nowadays, but I actually like the medical prospects of the CBD medicine themselves. One thing that me and my colleagues are focusing on out here in this town, as she was saying, was there is not a lot of people out there that are educating people. The cannabis world is kind of, oh, I like to get stoned, oh, I just want to go buy medicine and use it for the proper purposes, but there's not a lot of people out there actually teaching people. People like us, we're trying to step in and put scientists, chemists, doctors together, and actually bring them to small towns like this, to where we can have clinics, not just to sell cannabis, not just to prescribe medicine, but to actually teach the community, to teach the people what it's about, how the terpenoids work, how the cannabinoids work, what THC does to your body, what CBNs do to your body, what CBDs do to your body. There's over 300 kids that span from Newport to Portland. 300 kids with autism, Down Syndrome, MS, that are all under the age of 12 years old, that don't have ways to get proper medicine, that don't have no one to teach their parents, that don't have nobody on their side, because this is such looked at as a gray zone still. Oh, it's a drug. Everybody's been calling it a drug for years. It's not a drug. It's been used for 5,000 years in multiple countries, as a medicine, as a herb. It is our responsibility to teach people how to use it, why to use it, how it affects them. And I think that's really what everybody needs to try to focus on, because the more we educate people about this, the more everybody understands that it is safe. There's more people that die from alcohol than almost anything else. Nobody has ever died from cannabis, ever. Not one time in history. You can't overdose on it. It's completely grown from a plant, and if you medicate properly, that's just kind of what I think we need to focus on. Besides that, there's a lot of good benefits. You guys have a small little town here, you know, it's going to bring a lot of people to come here. I, we have schools that are willing to come out here and teach, big giant schools that actually want to help educate people, that are helping educate people in Denver right now, or that are helping people that are getting ready to start in Chicago. This isn't just, you know, a West Coast thing, this is starting to become spread viral. Medical marijuana is really becoming everywhere. Recreational side is a whole nother thing, you know, but really, the medical aspect of it, it's growing more and more per state. More numbers are coming down, people are starting to come out of the woodworks and go, you know, I don't want to take this handful of pills anymore. I'd rather grow something that's organic and eat it, or juice it, or eat it in a salad, or it's safe for me. My dad's a... And me speaking as a war veteran, I know that. It was one of the only things that literally helped me with my PTSD. And I don't have nowhere to prescribe it. I need a safe access point. I need somewhere that I can go, that I can trust, and I can trust the people there to educate me on my product and on my medicine, as a pharmacist would, when they're prescribing me the pills. So I understand you guys have problems with city limits, and I think that if we all work together, really, we can come to an understanding that makes it best for everyone, you know? I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else that needs an opportunity to?
My name's Brian Miller. I'm a 24-year-old Afghan campaign veteran. I deployed in 2008, and I came back with PTSD, severe depression, anxiety. Last year, in 2012, I got out of the military, and I returned to California, my home state. Three months later, I was diagnosed with pancreatitis, gastritis, and an ulcer. I don't drink. I got that all from stress. The only medicine that works for me, and helps me have a bowel movement, release my intestines, relieve my anxiety, relieve my depression, let me be here to sit with you, possibly not shake as much as I currently am, is medical marijuana. I currently take and have to take prescription pills, because I don't have safe access points. The man that just spoke in front of you told you that his father is a doctor. His mother also, I recently found out, takes the same prescription that I take, and now has a degenerative brain disease. To tell me that I only have a choice to take prescription pills, and I can't smoke marijuana, and my future is a degenerative brain disease, and that's where we're headed for the new veterans of our country, is not acceptable to me. For me to believe that my government can't provide a safe access point and a way to safely provide myself or any other patient medical marijuana, doesn't make sense. Pills are worse than medical marijuana. I'd rather, I'd rather have people on the streets with an abundance of marijuana than prescriptions of Xanax that they're only taking half of and they're selling off. You can sell a bunch of marijuana to your friends, excuse me, don't sell, selling's bad, but you have a bunch of marijuana throughout your friends. No one's going to overdose on Xanax, or someone's going to overdose on Xanax. No one's going to overdose on marijuana. You asked a question about dosage. You can't necessarily prescribe a dose, but what you can tell them, and you can, you can test it, and that's, that's something that we plan to bring out here, is testing facilities and safe access points, along with everything else. But once you've tested it, and you can tell CBDs or THC's, you can go with a certain way of prescribing. Older people, some people that don't like to get high, like myself and Eric, as they call it getting high nowadays, go straight CBD. You tell the patients, straight CBDs. You won't have those effects. You give it nothing but healing effects. But the one thing you can do as a prescription is you tell them to use it until they feel medicated, and then stop. That is it. You feel medicated, and you stop. To ask an individual to be able to stop medicating once they need to, as, as a human and as an adult, you should know you're over-medicating. And at that point, there's still no medical issues. All you're going to do is relax a little bit more, and maybe spend a little bit more time at your house. That's it. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to the consent agenda. The consent agenda calendar consists of items of a repeat, routine nature, considered under one single action. Counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. Tonight, we have one item under the consent agenda, and that being the minutes of the meeting, April 14th, 2014. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with a nay. Hearing none. We have a special order of business. We have a presentation. Pam Salisbury, Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
We are now streaming live. We do have a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am Pam Salisbury, Director of the Children's Advocacy Center of Lincoln County. And-
I'm Keith Killian. I'm also one of the board members for the Child Advocacy Center. So I'm Pam for the presentation tonight.
It's, it's been a year since I visited with you. April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Lincoln City is served by the Children's Advocacy Center. In 2013, 51% of the kids referred to the center came from Lincoln City. That's not just north Lincoln County, but it was Lincoln City, 51%. Year-to-date, this year, it's about a third of the children. And typically, Lincoln City referrals are a third of our population. The center is responsible for doing evaluation of suspected victims. Intervention, we provide counseling for the children that come to our center, as well as referrals from professionals in the community, from the schools, and from the Domestic Violence Center also sends us children. Children who witness violence experience the same psychological impact as that, an individual that's been violated. One of the most important things that we're doing, our mission, is to reduce the trauma for victims, and also, part of our mission is to prevent child abuse. So I wanted to speak briefly about our training, prevention training that is going on in the county. We received a three-year grant from the Ford Family Foundation to train 5% of the adults in Lincoln County. We're halfway through the project, and to date, I'm pleased to announce we're almost at 1,000 adults have been trained. One of the concerns, and this, this training is darkness to light stewards of children. It's a two-hour training. It's not the typical, what you think of the mandatory reporter, you know, how do you report child abuse, although it's mentioned briefly in the training. It's learning about what is child abuse, what are the signs of child abuse, but more importantly, what you can do to prevent child abuse. And learning the steps. When individuals leave the training, they feel very empowered, that they have tools that they can implement themselves, or in their agencies and organizations, that can prevent child abuse. We have trained almost all of Walport adults, YAHOTs. We've trained all of the school district teachers and administrators, including all the teachers and administrators at Taft High and Elementary. We are training entire congregations, churches, Newport, all the, all the cities except Lincoln City have trained their library staffs, the Ruck Center. There's been, law enforcement have been trained, patrol officers, community members. We have trained in Lincoln City Head Start, and some foster parents, as well as the early childhood education program, parents. What's really important, because this training is so valuable, is that we can sit down and train agencies, organizations, or just groups of adults. We train seven days a week. We train groups of four or five people. Yesterday, we trained a church congregation, which was about 60 individuals. So we can train a variety of sizes. We can do multiple trainings for an organization, so that it's not like taking every employee away. It is so critical that we do this, so that we can prevent it from happening. There will always be individuals in our communities, I'm sorry to say, who have a desire to abuse children, sexually abuse children. But we can prevent it from happening. And so we want to be a part of your community. We, we see your children. We are a part of your community. We want to be able to train and prevent abuse. Our vision is that we can prevent child abuse in Lincoln County. Lincoln County has 64% worse rate of abuse in the state. I ask that all of us commit to prevent that from happening. Let's be the best. Let's not allow these perpetrators to get to our kids. Keith, you want to say anything?
It's just that, it's an investment in our future. I encourage each of you to take a look at your, with your businesses, your employees, your congregations and stuff, and I strongly urge you to somehow participate in obtaining this, this training. It's two hours. It's a very minimal investment for the, the gains that can be made in combating sexual abuse in our county.
Pam, if I could, would you mind sharing with us, how do they get a, someone get ahold of you, or the, either frequency?
They can call the center. Our phone number is 541-574-0841.
And that's the Child Advocacy Center?
Right. Right. If there are trainings already scheduled in the community, we can tell callers when those are going to be held. Or we can take someone's name and phone number and when something is scheduled. Or if you're an organization, you can call us, and we'll set a time which, which is good for you. Each, each participant receives a workbook. The work, the value, I mean, this is free of charge. I don't think I mentioned that, but because of the grant, we are not charging any, any fees for the training. So it's free. Every participant leaves with a workbook. The workbooks cost us $10 apiece, so it's, it's a valuable resource. We also have resource guides, which we have, we have put together, which are Lincoln County resources, and it has some very valuable information in it that helps parents, grandparents, or community members.
If I can, Pam, you, you mentioned a couple of target areas. I was trying to listen to who you have trained, schools and stuff. Is the thought where there's interaction or with, with children? Or would that be the targeted place?
Where we started our project, a year ago, January, January 2013, the state now requires anyone that volunteers in any capacity that works with children. So you're talking about, you know, the soccer coaches, the parents that are out on the soccer field participating and helping. They're all now mandatory reporters. And so when we started the project a year and a half ago, we, we went to organizations that had high volumes, or had volunteers working with them, and began providing the training. But our goal is to train everyone, I mean, all adults, because it's not just limited to people who are volunteering with children.
And would you mind clarifying, you talked about Lincoln County's percentage, and I just labeled it as worst, but 64% of what?
Oh, it's compared to the rest of the state. So we're-
State average?
When you look at a state average, and then they, they do a report every year, although it's like a year, it takes a year to get the numbers together. Lincoln County came out as 64% worse than the total state average.
Thank you. Any other questions, Roger?
Yes. I'm assuming that the training that you're doing is to train the people who are not the abusers, but the people who are observing. And unfortunately, it's after the abuse has already taken place that they're observing this. There's no way to get that training to the parents that are doing the abusing?
Well, I, we believe that sometimes there are parents there that are abusing, that come to the training. And we actually say, you may be an abuser. It's interesting, only one in 10 children ever tell anyone they've been abused. And it's not, we, we do see, and many times with these trainings, someone will come forward, maybe 80-year-old woman, 70-year-old man, whatever, or it could be a 30-year-old, but, and say, you know, I've never told anyone all of my life, but I was abused. And so they've carried that burden. They, the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, recently did a study. And I think if, if, for no other reason, the societal, the economic cost of abuse, they, it's, it's a major health, public health issue. A child that's abused, who does not die, the cost to the community is $210,000 for their lifetime cost, because alcohol, drugs, depression, obesity, heart disease, teen pregnancy. It goes on and on and on, all relate back to early childhood trauma, of which child abuse is one of the top of those traumas. And so it is costing us. And so for no other reason, we need to prevent child abuse, because it's going to have a major impact on all of our communities.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just, this is a question. The Oregon Diocese of the Episcopal Church, several years ago, instituted their Safe Child Training, which is mandated for all adults in leadership roles and/or have any contact with children. And I believe it's every two years, we go through this. So there's a whole nother group of people out there that have been trained to what not to do, and what to observe for. And it's, it's very valuable training. Ours is much longer, unfortunately. I, I'd love two hours, but it was four hours, I think. But-
That's great.
It's, it's well worth it. It's surprising what, what you don't think of as being abuse, that turns out to be a type of abuse that you had not considered. So I, I found it very valuable training. And anyway, I just wanted you to know that there's another group of people out there that have had this kind of training.
We, we provide an evaluation tool to every participant, and we are tracking those. And of course, we have to report those to Ford Family Foundation, but it's public information we're very happy to share. We have not had one negative feedback, and we've trained about 1,000 people. You definitely go away from the training with, with tools. You feel like you can make a difference.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Service clubs is a good opportunity for a presentation, but that's, they usually only allow about a 30-minute. Do you have an abbreviated presentation?
We do, and it went Lincoln City Rotary.
We did one for the Rotary. We haven't done one for, I believe, Quanah's or Chamber of Commerce, or some other avenues that we're looking at.
Give you the name of the fellow for Quanah's if you want it afterwards.
Okay. It's a, it's like 30 minutes, right?
Yes.
20, 30 minutes. It's a trailer, but it, for some people, then they definitely want to take the two-hour, then we'll take it later.
Pam, I'm, I'm sorry you have to come here and actually report this. Hopefully, that will change. The good news is, we did get streaming live, live, with the audio and picture. So it did reach what we had hoped, a much broader audience as far as publicizing.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
You both for coming, and the work you do towards this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And in addition, there's a fundraiser going on, June 14th. If any of you happen to be golfers, we've got a fundraiser golf tournament at Olalla Golf Course on June 14th. Four-man scramble.
If we know anybody?
Yep.
Great. Thank you both.
You both for coming and the work you do towards this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And in addition, there's a fundraiser going on June 14th. If any of you happen to be golfers, we've got a fundraiser golf tournament at Olalla Golf Course on June 14th. Four-man scramble.
If we know anybody?
Yep.
Great. Thank you both. Commissioner Hall, we have Lincoln County, Lincoln Community Land Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And before I get to the topic at hand, I would just like to add that I am one of those who has gone through that training, and I would like to personally endorse it as being a very worthwhile investment of a couple of hours of time. I am one of your county commissioners, but I'm here tonight wearing a different hat, the board president for a nonprofit housing development entity that I know several of you are familiar with to some degree at least, the Lincoln Community Land Trust, with a brief presentation and a request. And let's see, do we left-click to advance the slides? Is that correct? Right-click, okay. Okay. And the mission of the Lincoln Community Land Trust is to provide permanently affordable home ownership for working individuals and family within Lincoln County. And the request tonight is being made to you after being presented to my colleagues on the Lincoln County Commission and to the Newport City Council as well. We are asking each of these entities for a three-year commitment of $30,000 per year, which would support a full-time executive director for the land trust. Since the inception of the land trust, we have staffed that position on a part-time basis with the Community Services Consortium. Unfortunately, CSC, with the wind down of federal stimulus funds, has had to reduce its staffing and is continuing to reduce staffing, and the position that has supported the land trust has been eliminated after, we do have someone maintaining its services on a very part-time basis, a former CSC employee who's now working for the state. But after much discussion among the land trust board, we decided we've reached kind of a critical point in the organization's evolution, as people sometimes say. It's time to go big or go home, and that's why we are really hoping to get the commitment to support a full-time staff position for the first time in the history. So, in addition to the financial commitment, we hope that the county and the cities would consider making land available, revolving loan funds available for construction of workforce housing. And the goal here is for the three-year, the reason for the three-year commitment is hopefully to make the position self-supporting by the fourth year. So, how do we make it sustainable? You know, five of the cities and the county have been paying yearly membership dues to the land trust, a formula based on population. So, we hope to have all of the entities continuing to do that. As we build our housing portfolio, there will be some income coming in from ground leases and development fees. And again, with a full-time staff position, we're hoping that person can put a lot more energy into grant writing, building our membership base, other forms of fundraising. So, I think a fair question for you and my colleagues and your counterparts in Newport is, why is it appropriate to invest scarce public resources in the development of workforce housing? This quotation from State Land Use Goal 10 talks about cities and counties inventorying buildable lands and their plans encouraging the availability of adequate numbers of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels, which are commensurate with the financial capabilities of Oregon households, which I think is kind of a bureaucratic way of saying people ought to be able to afford to live in the communities where they work. And so, why is this particular investment one that makes sense? We've spent, as I'll talk about here in a moment, several years building up the land trust. Essentially, we've got the model built and in place, including relationships with local lenders, realtors, other housing providers. This is the opportunity now to grow the model and to really build public-private partnerships that hopefully can leverage additional resources. I think, again, from a city perspective, the importance of workforce housing to economic development cannot be underscored enough. I think you all probably have a sense that the growing disparity between wages and housing prices has made it increasingly difficult for local employers to attract and retain workers. You know, certainly, we know that critical public safety and public workspeople need to live close to the communities they serve. And again, it won't be news to you, and I want to thank Mr. Hawker for tracking this information. It usually causes some nods of recognition from other communities, the fact that over a number of years, I know that Lincoln City has seen the number of city employees living within its zip code drop roughly from 2/3 to 1/3. So, just, I'd encourage everyone to give some thought to how that impacts a community's ability to respond to a natural disaster or other crisis. Just some other thoughts. I think really you maintain the vitality and diversity of a community and even enhance it when people at a broad range of income levels can afford to work there. Shorter commutes also mean less traffic congestion, less wear and tear on the roads, and less impact on the environment. So, if we get this full-time staff person, what will he or she be doing? Certainly, organizational development. We want to kick up our community outreach and engagement. Again, with the part-time position and our volunteer board of directors, we've been working on that, but the hope would be a full-time person could put a lot more energy into that, as well as the resource development we talked about, grant writing, property acquisitions, fundraising, and then managing what we hope will be a growing portfolio of housing. And that's, those are all projects that the board will be supporting as well. So, a quick recap of the history of the land trust. It was formed in 2007. Over the last several years, we have established our nonprofit status, assembled what I think is a very strong board of directors that represents the entire county, including Lincoln City's own Ron Tierney and Allison Robertson. We've got the bylaws in place, the ground lease. We've set up homebuyer education programs, put green building policies in place, and as I've already mentioned, educated banks and mortgage lenders about this model. And we have two houses in the portfolio before, so far, both of them right here in Lincoln City. This home purchased a few years ago with neighborhood stabilization funds, rehabbed and sold to a couple, both employed full-time at Schnook Winds. They were in the market, looking to move to a larger apartment, really didn't think they would have the opportunity to own their own home. They stumbled across this home, and they have now been in there, I believe, a little over a year and are quite happy with it. Then, the next project, luckily, that home came on a double lot. The other half of the lot was undeveloped, and we completed construction of our very first new build. And as of that moment, that house is in closing. So, two, the first two of what we hope will be many homes. So, also, in your packet, I hope, I believe, copies were handed out tonight. You're probably wondering what the other entities have said, and I don't have anything in writing, but basically, I can tell you, my colleagues on the county commission said they were willing to do this as long as both cities were on board. And then, we have word here from Newport City Manager that the $30,000 contribution to fund the executive director position is in the preliminary budget for the coming fiscal year. However, the council, they've discussed this, but they have not acted on it yet, also includes up to $160,000 in revolving loan funds. And I probably neglected to mention, I should, that City of Lincoln City revolving loan funds have supported both of those initial land trust developments. So, another document included, this was developed at the request of the Newport Council, has not been shared, well, was just shared with them on Friday, and so, you're getting a look at it at the same time. A couple of members of the Newport Council suggested a memorandum of understanding that would basically spell out the terms and scope of this agreement, what the deliverables are for the land trust, and what the plan would be towards sustainability. So, this is strictly a draft, ready for input from all the entities. And I think that's everything I have. I'd be glad to respond to questions if you have any.
Questions from council? To Chester.
Commissioner Hall, are there any houses other than the two in Lincoln City that have sold?
Those are the only two that we have acquired and sold up until now.
Nothing in Newport or anywhere else in the county?
No.
Anything on the drawing board for next builds or?
Not at this time. You know, we have had a lot of conversations with both other municipal entities and private developers, and all of those have dead-ended up until now. But, you know, for one reason or another, Toledo had three lots a couple of years ago. Their council had serious discussion about deeding them over to the land trust, but eventually decided because of some traffic issues, they would, at least for now, prefer to leave them undeveloped. And a couple of, you know, some developers who are interested in working with us, but nothing has come to fruition yet. The hope is with some, a full-time staff person and some other resources in the pipeline, we could start making more happen.
Do you have any projections of sustainability in three years? Must mean certainly adding to the inventory of the land leases. You know, is there, has the board taken a look at what the goal would be in a three-year, 15, 16, 17? What's?
Not formally. I think the, you know, probably the hope would be to at least get, you know, it just depends on what door opens. I mean, Newport was looking at a plan from Derek Tokos, their community development director. The council has discussed, but again, not acted on it, actually, an agreement to deed one property at a time from their surplus inventory, but basically, an agreement that would call for development of, I think, a minimum of five houses in a six, or six houses in a five-year period, using City of Newport surplus properties and revolving loan funds. So, there's ideas like that out there being explored, but nothing firm at this point.
And do you have anything as far as that you've had a part-time person? And I'm assuming from Corvallis?
Right.
You know, so, have you looked at a part-time person in county and what the difference might be there? I guess where I'm going, of course, is full-time, three years, what's really the chance of sustainability? Halftime, three years in county, you know, what kind of difference that might make? And then, ratchet up if there's light at the end of the tunnel?
That's certainly something we could consider. I think we felt, you know, at least initially, that having a full-time person probably would, you know, the more time we could devote to it, staff time we could devote to it, the better opportunities. You know, one of the things in the sustainability plan might be if just the funding stream, the resources isn't there, to maybe look at scaling it back to a part-time position. But certainly, again, depending on the response of all the potential partners here, you know, if people want to come in at a lesser level, maybe it starts out as a part-time position and we look at building it up to full-time.
I guess the only other thing, have you explored the possibility of teaming up with another existing housing entity?
We did have some discussions with that. We even had last fall, kind of a mini summit with Community Services Consortium, Habitat, the Community Development Corporation, and Shangri-La Corporation was represented there as well, Samaritan House. Everybody was saying, you know, that this is the one entity in the county, really, that's working at, working towards serving the folks at 60% all the way up to 120% of median income. Everybody else is either rental housing, low and moderate income rental housing, or like Habitat, really going for the lower bracket of the market. Nobody else is targeting these folks and that they were supportive of our efforts to try and grow the land trust as an independent entity. And the goal of $100,000 a year annual budget, Kurt Abbott, another one of our board members, who is from Waldport, former city council member there, he's a longtime board member for the Economic Development Alliance of Lincoln County, and they're operating with a full-time executive director, a part-time assistant, and covering office overhead on a budget of approximately $100,000 a year. So, that was where we targeted this number.
Other questions? So, I would think, you know, we haven't gotten into the budget process, but that certainly comes forth next week. And would need to take a look at that and probably reconvene council in a discussion on this item once we see, you know, what's in the budget and where we might. Obviously, we've been a player.
Yes.
And this council has supported it. So, the education level's pretty high, fortunately. So, it's a matter of, you know, trying to look out into the future, I would think. So, we, we're not going to make you a commitment. We're not, you're not going to walk away with a check in hand.
Oh, I wasn't expecting that. I just wanted to lay the request before you, and certainly, if there's any additional information I can provide, or Ron or Allison at any point, certainly glad to do that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
You did a nice job, Bill. You did a nice job.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Tierney, you're back.
I will not repeat everything that I did at Urban Renewal Agency. I'll just bring this forward. What we're talking about is a $4 million borrowing for four years for urban renewal projects. To obtain the most beneficial terms, our bond counsel and financial advisors have recommended doing the following. That the city become the actual borrower, securing the loan with the full faith and credit of the city. The city then will loan the funds to the Urban Renewal Agency.
I guess it's under.
The agency would then pledge all of its tax increment, plus its beginning fund balance, to the city for the city to make the payments to whichever financial institution that is chosen. The terms of the bank loan and the intergovernmental loan will be exactly the same, under the same terms. This is $4 million for four years for urban renewal projects. And what I recommend is that the city approve Resolution 2014-07, and the Schedule A of that resolution is the intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency.
Might explain to the public. One of the reasons is we went through this in an agency meeting just prior to the city council called Urban Renewal. So, we're making Ron do it a couple of times on purpose. With no other questions, then we'll deal with resolution later. Thank you, sir. We have then department committee reports, and we have the Visitor and Convention Committee, VCC, their annual semi-annual report.
I'm Diane Kuz, the chair for the VCC.
Don Brennmas, vice chair.
And it's taken us a while to get here, but we're here now. So, we're going to report on the summary of grants for profit partnership awards. And for the past two years, we have awarded over 123,626, or advised to award, and it was awarded. You have the list with you. I don't think to go over each one. If anybody's interested, they can always contact Sandy for more information. But just to give you a few that we've gone through, Connie Hansen Garden and Lincoln County Animal Shelter, Orinco Soapbox Derby, Seles Bay Music, Sit- Sitka Center, Swim Club, the Lincoln City Cultural Center, Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. And that was for the Dash. North Lincoln County Historical Museum, Taft Elementary, Bama, Orinco's Pride. So those are the ones we've done for the last two years for the nonprofit. For the for-profit marketing partnership awards, we've done 25,000 for Hoop It Up in 2013. And for the not-quite 11th-hour Santa Holiday Fair was $2,240. So for the for-profit, it's $27,240. So that one's not going so fast. The other one's going quite fast. And you want to talk about the new special event programs?
Oh, yeah, we're sharing.
You know, before you, Diane, before you get off there, would you mind going back to these and maybe reminding not only the council, but the audience, the whole purpose? You know, these, these awards, so to speak, aren't just money going out, but there's some benefits.
No, 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 they're for events, special events that draw tourists to Lincoln City. It's to help out the visitor and convention bureau as it is. Because when we do events, it takes a lot of time and labor to do those. So we asked the community, or we opened it up. There's a fund, $100,000 for both the profit and for the not-for-profit. There's a budget of $100,000 for each one. And then those can write grants to do their special events. For the for-profit, though, it's a market, marketing partnership award. So it's used just for marketing purposes.
Thank you.
So some of the new special events or programs that were developed and launched because of these funds were free admission and programs to the Lincoln County, North Lincoln County Historical Museum. The Swim Club Timing System that's located at the recreational center. Lincoln City Cultural Center Program Coordinator that helps with events and Antique Week. Devil's Lake Dash, the Chamber October, Arttober Brew Fest, and Conny Hansen Garden Program Developer. Recommendations regarding the grant partnership funds from the committee is that we reduce the for-profit fund to $50,000 per year and increase the nonprofit fund to $150,000 per year. In the last two years, we've just not had the people come forward for the for-profit. And so we feel that we'd still like to use that money and we could. So we would open it up for other nonprofits to be able to come in. Other VCC activities this calendar year, we reviewed and approved the marketing plan proposed by the VCB director. We recommended changes for the for-profit and nonprofit funds to the city council as attached. And this would be your?
The grant fund.
Grant, grant fund guidelines that you have for both, both events. The, one of the things that we wanted to change was that we meet, when we have the grants, we have historically, people have just been able to come in and submit their application. And then they come to one of our meetings and, and do a presentation to us. And they could come at any time. We would like to change that to, and that's in the, in the guidelines. We would like to change that so that it would be proposed to only January 2nd and July 1st. So that we would, July 1st starts a new fiscal with the budget. January 2nd would be the other half of the sixth month year. That way, we would just have applications submitted at those two times instead of coming in continually. And we also felt that a lot of the events would, this would give them a better marketing agenda for them to follow through. If it was, you know, if you have an event that's going to be less than 90 days away, you're not going to do a very good job of marketing the event. So we felt that if we changed these guidelines to these type, you know, to, to just two times a year, then it would work better for everyone and they would have a better successful event.
And we wouldn't spend every meeting going over grants?
Yes.
Our hour meeting has gone to three-hour meetings. So I think that's what, one of the things too is important is that we've been waiting for the changes. I know we submitted them and then now we're submitting them again. And I think we need your approval to move forward with them and so we can get those into place.
Was there any, quite honestly, as you can tell from this agenda, it's loaded.
Yes.
So we're not going to deal with these policies tonight.
Right.
We'll take them under advisement. But are they the same ones that were there before? Or did you take a chance and go back through? So they're new recommendations?
Yes, there's new recommendations on them. So please, yeah, review them. I think we, we talked about some of them that really made sense.
Good. Because I'd ask council that, you know, would read it. And we'll reconvene and deal with those at council. Are there anything else highlighted? Two application dates in that. But there was anything else big that you were proposing, big changes? You've obviously thrown in a different funding amounts, suggestions on budgets. But anything else in there?
I don't think that, I think those are the two big things is just do it twice a year. And, you know, look at the budgets. We're spending more in the nonprofits than we are for the for-profits. And so we'd like to have that way out.
Could I, then going back to your report? And thank you, it's always nice to see a list anyway of what's going. One of the things for me that's missing is kind of results. You know, in essence, why we did it. Because as you've indicated, these are nonprofits doing an event to either entertain or attract folks to the community. But in, in making the judgment, I'm assuming the committee has some criteria of awarding, you know, some criteria that says, yeah, this has a chance of happening. And I, you might think about that as far as how to have another column, pick whatever you want. But it would be helpful because I'm assuming you're asking them for some criteria. And it, it'd help council anyway to reaff, you'd just be reaffirming why these are good choices.
Okay, yes, we do have a point system in which we, when the grants come in. And I think as we continue to learn, in fact, we just found another city who's doing their grants in a very different way. But we're not throwing that out there yet. We said 2016, maybe. Because, because they've got it down. It's once a year. It's they attend, they have to attend meetings before they even go to the grants. So we're learning. We are learning. And as far as, yes, with the, with, even with the results when they're coming back, we look at those and are they meeting before we look at next year's grants?
Yeah.
So there is a point system in which we do.
Good. The other that would confuse me when I looked at this, you, you have, you know, total approved recommendations, 123,000, average 61,000 a year, which is well below your $100,000. And yet you're asking for another 50. I can quickly figure out these are not two fiscal years. So it'd help me anyway in trying to figure out what you really need as far as funding? Because this doesn't help because it.
No. And I do think putting it twice a year will give us a better, a better way to look at it. Because right now, we're getting each, you know, just before the meeting, we're getting three or four more. And it's 500 here, 1,000 here, or 20,000 here.
But you do know what you, you've got a budget of $100,000.
Mm-hmm.
You, you do know what you've approved and allocated?
Yes.
And?
And what gets flipped over to the next year? Because half of it is this year and half of it's next year.
Well, except it's been allocated out of your $100,000. So it's a math.
Yeah.
Process.
That's why we have Sandy.
Well, again, the confusion I have is if I just read this quickly, you don't need another, you don't even spend $100,000. As I recall, a couple of years ago, you actually encouraged the budget committee to reduce their $100,000 allocation back to $75,000 a year. For the same reason, you, you weren't spending it in essence, so.
Maybe I can help?
Oh, please.
You might, no, all right. You might recall that probably six months ago or so, we had a discussion in front of council about how these awards were happening. And they were at that time awarding more in a fiscal year than the $100,000 because of the lop over. So we are now backing out of that to get the math back to where it belongs. And that's why it looks this way. They actually awarded about $84,000 this fiscal year. And it would have been more, except a couple of people actually withdrew or did not complete the process. And as a result, the amount of money that they were originally awarded actually didn't get spent. So it's, it's, the other thing to keep in mind, and they know this, but they're probably not thinking about it right now, is oftentimes when they're looking at the amount of money that they have awarded already this fiscal year, and it gets close to that $100,000, they start changing their judgment based on that or changing the awards based on that. If they had more room so that they weren't worrying that they were going to go $5,000 more than they should, I think they would actually maybe give some awards that were a little bit more useful.
Good.
Thank you, Sandy.
Other questions that council may have? Chester?
I'm, I'm looking at the for-profit marketing partnership award. And we gave $25,000 to Hoop It Up. And I'm wondering if we received any post-event financial analysis of community benefit for that, that event?
Oh, I'm sure we received it. Do we have it, the information right? I don't have the information right now. But they do, all of them have turned in their reports. So Sandy will have that as far as the, the benefits to the city?
Yes, to the community.
Yeah. I don't have that with me at this time.
Is that required of the nonprofits as well?
Yes. They all turn in a report 90 days, 60 days after the event. It's based on their, their grant and receiving the last payment. So Sandy does have all that information in her department.
Well, like the mayor, it would be very useful for me to see some of that information and what benefits we're, we're getting from, from all of this money that's going out. And with regarding the Soapbox Derby, half of it was forfeited because of non-compliance. What, what does that mean?
They didn't fulfill their contract. I believe they only, they were saying they were having three races and they have two. They never filled in their, the last report. That's part of getting the last payment is that you submit your report within a certain timeline. And that was not done.
And that was the only event at which that happened? Everybody else completed their reports and were awarded their last 33%?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
Just a comment. It would really be helpful to have some kind of a, you know, just seat-of-the-pants figure or guess about what the overall economic impact is that that's created by these grants. That's kind of following up on what Chester was saying. But it would be really helpful for me, too. I, I just think that, you know, we're, we are paying money out. I do know that in the case of Hoop It Up, that factory stores had a banner, a banner day because of that event, so.
Yeah, their traffic was in the top 10.
Yeah. So if we had that kind of information, I think it'd be very helpful.
You know, that it is really tough to get a good handle on. You know, it's a little bit like this.
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Just something in the wind, just to get, just a ballpark figure of gut feeling.
Well, and I guess this has always been the issue around events. But I will say again, if I'm not mistaken, you ask applicants to tell you why you should give them some money. Not, not just for the value of the event, but to the community evaluation. So they're already making some kind of judgment of, you know, beds or something, people. And I, I think that's the thing to start kind of capturing. And then I know your report at the end, they supposedly report back to you that kind of stuff. Because part of the criteria, I would think, for a future funding would be to certainly do all the reports. But if they so exaggerated their expectations to get the fund and then delivered way below, you'd think, I would assume the committee would think less of them on their next reward request.
And we do review that when they, like with Seletz Bay, you know, they return their reports. And we take that and look at that before the next year to see where it's, it's growing or not growing. And those are things that we take into consideration. Again, it, it has really become, I want to say, oh, it's out of, and there's so much happening constantly that if we, again, bring it back to twice a year, it, it's going to give us a better handle, more time that we can spend really giving you that information. Right now, it's every month, it's going like this and this and this, so.
And I apologize, because I actually, when I, even when I read this, I, I thought for sure you'd already moved to those twice a year applicants, but you're still doing them whenever they come. Okay? So that must be in those policy changes that you're suggesting.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Gary, anything, or you all right?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank Dawn and Diane for all of the time they spend with the VCC. I know anybody that knows them knows they're both very capable people. And the community's extremely lucky to have, have them working for us. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And we will find a place on one of these council meetings where we have something short of reading and we'll go to these policies.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for the report. We have another report from the Public Arts Committee.
My tech person.
Oh. Okay.
I am Patty Cybers. I'm with the Arts, Lincoln City Public Arts. I live in Nyatso. I have just a few to show you. I might read this first. "Public art reflects a culture of, of the people in a community. It is food for the soul and it tells a story for those who follow it. Public services, services often compete for support and funding. Services like police, fire, roads, water, and sewer are critical and essential to the community. But taken alone are not sufficient for a high level of community satisfaction or the quality of life. Public art can benefit the community in multiple ways. The aesthetic contributions are obvious. The true benefits go deeper. Public art can honor the regional history. It can interpret cultural attributes. It is a visible addition to the identity of a community. Public art humanizes the built environment and invigorates public spaces. It provides an intersection between past, present, and future, and between disciplines, and between ideas. How can one look at Sparky, the Wish Garden by the lake without smiling? Who can see Waldo, the walrus, in front of the Chamber of Commerce office and not enjoy him? Public art brings happiness and a sense of well-being to the viewer and a sense of pride to those who have been involved in making it a reality. To paraphrase Michelle Obama, art defines who we are as a people and provides an account of our history for generations to come." These are a few of the examples. We have, Lincoln City is getting better known for their art all the time. We have, Lincoln City is getting better known for their art all the time. We're getting quite a reputation, that's a good reputation to have. So we have that at the library and at the community center, the Regatta Grounds and D River Park. Creating an economically vital organ, full of vibrant communities and innovative thinkers, strengthened by healthy trade and tourism. That's by the Organ Arts Commission. Lincoln City Public Arts Committee was created in 2006. We have work to connect artists with the city and introduce local artists to the public. Okay. The rest of it is not on there.
No.
So, we have, almost the last year, there have only been three members of the committee: Bob Nastella, Suzanne Allen, and myself. But as of last month, we have two more people who have joined us: Bob Gibson and Shelley Locke. Bob and, Bob Gibson took many of the photographs, and Suzanne and Bob helped me write down what I was going to say tonight. We have three projects that we're looking at. Don't have many details, haven't gotten that far. We were sort of waiting for those, a larger committee than we had, so... We're talking about an art festival where there are different artists that would paint the back of bus shelters. Each, not each bus shelter, we haven't decided how many, but would be a different artist. We also would like to change the art, the photos that are on this floor. They've been here a few years. We have framed posters of the Finders Keepers, another very successful program in Lincoln City, the glass floats that they find on the beach. We have a poster from every year that they've had it, and we thought we should probably start exchanging some of the art that's been up too long. And a third one is, excuse me, Nikki Price at the Cultural Center has approached us about a piece of art that would help cover up the exhaust fan. They just put in an exhaust fan for their new kitchen, and it's facing the highway. And so we are looking at possible things that would make it a little bit more attractive looking. And that's, there's one other, oh, Chester. This is not, we did not do this. The Chamber of Commerce did this. But this is an amazing brochure. Art is everywhere in Lincoln City. It shows all of the art galleries and all of the public art. And that includes not just what our committee has worked on, but it's been part of the urban renewal, the wonderful archway in Taft, many other things that urban renewal has included, because, once again, art is really putting us on the map, and that's something to be proud of. Any questions?
Very nice. Thank you. It's nice to see some of the pictures and be reminded they are, they're out there, and I've seen that brochure, and it is helpful to help direct people, I guess would be the way. And I'm so pleased that you finally got five committee people. So, you know, I wish you luck retaining and, you know, getting the energy and creativity from that committee. And I'm hoping that the audience also knows you exist and feels free in signing up or making themselves known, that they could also participate in a committee aspect, but...
Thank you. And I will apologize, we, I know we should be in front of the city council more often, so you have some idea of what we're doing or not doing.
Could, would, can you, these are great ideas, you know, and I would agree. I'm glad the Cultural Center touched you. It's a natural spot to help with it, exhaust cover-up and some artistic, I feel a lot better with, you know, more artists and people getting involved in the same thing with the photo exchange, rotation, I think it's great. So, any observations, comments? Wes?
Mr. Mayor, since, I'm kind, this is one of the spear points on the public art thing, my only regret at this point is we have as little as we do. And we have a lot, but I really had hoped by now that we'd see even more. I think the possibility of painting the back of the, some of the bus places, no, I can't...
Shelters?
Bus shelters, is a wonderful idea. And I would, I would think that we could encourage businesses as part of their renovation plans, or part of their building plans, as they're building in, to consider including public art into their design. I think of a number of cities recently, a couple of years ago, I was in Austin, Texas, and it was amazing to me how many buildings have pieces of art on the sidewalk or included into the facade of their building. It amazed me. Austin, Texas is not one of the towns I would have ever thought of for art, but everywhere you went, even in private homes, there were, there was public art. You know, statues, or statuary, or mosaics into walls that surrounded their property, all kinds of things. People have a tendency to think of public art as something that only cities do, and that's not true. Public art is anything that enhances a city's appearance. So, I encourage you, I've served on the committee, and I encourage this committee to keep going. And I would hope that you could, as the committee grows, and hopefully it will grow, that we can reach out to some other people and for the public to reach to the committee and say, "Hey, you know, I'm thinking about doing some stuff. Is there something I could do on my property that would enhance it, but still be a part of my landscaping," or whatever. I just think that, that I would like to see Lincoln City be known as not only a place with art galleries and antique shops, but a place of wonderful public art, so...
Patty, I didn't hear you say, so I apologize, but is there any discussion amongst committee members of trying to reach outside the city for either funding, you know, grants, and maybe leverage the public dollars for art?
We haven't done that yet. There are matching grants out there. Some of us are better with numbers than others of us. And so, we've talked about it. I'm hoping some of our new members have some other firsthand knowledge in this.
Great, okay. Any other, who, Henry?
Just one quick question, as a comment. I think we just paid two thousand dollars for the pictures up and down the hallways. I think we did, was it one of the grant requests or something else like that? What's going to happen to the pictures? They're still going to be used in the community and things like this? I just want, because I think, some things get put away in a dusty little dark spot, and we get forgotten, and somebody tosses them out later on. I know we spent two thousand dollars, I think it's about two thousand dollars on the pictures in the hallway. What's going to happen to them?
I don't think it was that much, but we did, I remember the dog, I know, I know... I thought it was like five hundred, but we, honestly, we can store those kind of things, and they can come back up when there's vacancies. I would like to see the art committee suggest some other things to put up there. We can rotate, we have a lot of storage space in there.
I know we got storage, but like I say, if we, you know, if there's a rotation policy, if you leave, or if I leave, or something else, if the committee seems to be changing in flux, things like that, we got something in place where the stuff gets moved around or something else. Just go into storage and state, public art is to be viewed and not to be stored. You know, I don't think, you know, that's my...
But it can also be rotated.
That's, that's fine. That's, I like seeing, you know...
Were you just saying, make sure we remember it's in storage?
Exactly. I say, some of the big pieces, we don't have a problem with.
Actually, when the committee, I'm sorry, when the committee started talking about this, they talked about looking for other locations to rotate those things to. And the decision was made, until they knew whether or not you wanted them to go forward with the rotation, there wasn't much point in doing that. So, at some point, we'll come back with, guess where we moved them now, and let the rest of the world know.
That'll work. Thank you. I can, honestly, I can approve that. All I need is a recommendation from the Arts Committee, and we can make it happen.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you and the committee for service. Really appreciate it. Okay. We're now into city manager report.
Couple items, Mayor. First item is, we've kind of let the Lake Drive Voyage LID, Local Improvement District, for street improvements and for pressure sewer system, kind of drop, and based on our act agendas that we've had, it's kind of fallen by the wayside. I think the way to bring this to conclusion would be not to try to squeeze it on a regular council meeting agenda, but to hold a workshop of an hour or two, just to focus on this issue. If you agreed to that, we would invite the property owners, who would be participating in it, to come in and have a public say, hear a staff report, have a public say, and then let council have a discussion of it. It wouldn't be a decision. It might require a new public hearing and action at a regular council meeting, but just so that council and the public is aware of all the issues, to just do a study on this, a study workshop. I'm going to suggest June 2nd, which is, I think it's a Monday.
It is Monday.
As a tentative date, it gives us enough time to notify everybody and prepare a little presentation, but that ball is really in your court.
Let me check, June 2nd is a Monday, three to five, again, is that...
Works for us.
That's all right? Looks like we've got plenty.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So...
What time?
Three to five.
Okay.
And we will get notice out to all the affected parties. And the other item that I have is, we've got a potential emergency project, construction project, that we need to entertain. We'll do a report here. Lila Bradley has given you a memo. I don't know if you want to take a few minutes to read it, if you haven't had a chance so far, but she'll kind of hit the high points. And then we would also need to add a resolution under, oh, we did, never mind. Why'd you say we didn't?
We didn't add the report, we added the resolution at the end, but not this report.
So, here's the report, the resolution comes later.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I've been working very closely with Joe Squire of ODOT, he's our area manager, and we've had an eighteen-inch concrete culvert that goes, crosses a street from southeast Thirty-Fifth Street to southwest Thirty-Fifth, near the Christmas Cottage, the south end of the Nell Scott Strip. And the eighteen-inch culvert drains the highway, it's an area drain for that whole highway side, on the east side of the highway, and goes across at a twenty-six-foot depth. And the pipe failed on the west side, and they, and ODOT is, owns that pipe, and we use it for our Nell Scott pump station overflow as well. And so if we have any issues with the pump station, that's where the overflow goes to. And so they went in and tried to fix the line. They were going to actually pipe burst that line and replace it, and that, that failed. They weren't able to do that, and so they had a little bit more of a cave-in, and it was about seventy feet of pipe. And so they, they had brought in a contractor to try and work on it and access the pipe, and the pipe just literally crumbled. It's, it was an old concrete pipe. And so that failed, and so then ODOT looked at their next step, and so we've been working on this since February, the end of February. And when, when that failed, they went back and looked at it and said that, you know, really, we only need to be eight feet deep. And that's not deep enough for our overflow pipe to access. Our pipe needs to be twelve feet deep. And so they offered that they would reimburse the city if we wanted to take on the project and add our extra few feet. But then we do all the permitting, the contracting, go out to bid, and have this intergovernmental agreement. And so, so they are willing to do their part and pay for their part to the city, and then we would do the bid document and have a contractor build that line at a twelve-foot depth, which would work for us. And then we also, on the side of the pump station, Luke Gamozzle did a nice drawing that shows another section of pipe from the discharge manhole that would need to be raised over to the culvert by Bob's books, so that, so that we would have the correct elevation to get across the highway at the twelve-foot. And we would fill in the bottom of that manhole and grout the old eighteen-inch pipe that's twenty-six feet deep, to, you know, keep the road from failing. And it's, it's a difficult project, there's flowing sand at the twelve-foot level, there's also water that would have to be dewatered. And so, ODOT also agreed to allow this work to happen during the day with two lanes open. There's enough room in that section to have two lanes open during the day, and would be much easier for a contractor to open that, do an open cut, and repair that. And so tonight, we were asking for that agreement that you would approve, that we would be able to do that project.
Can you outline the reasons why we're asking that this be declared an emergency?
Well, definitely. So, as I mentioned, the project provides drainage for the highway and surrounding property, as well as permitting, permitted emergency sewer discharge. The failed culvert and lack of adequate drainage has compromised the roadbed, threatening the structural integrity of the road. And due to the potential hazard to the public, additional damage to the roadway, and loss of service to the area, that was what ODOT declared the emergency for. So they have declared it an emergency. We see it as an emergency if we had any issues with our pump station, there's nowhere for that flow to go. And also, the road, I'm sure all of you have seen them out there working, and there's a large sinkhole, it's probably eight feet, and eight feet deep, or deeper. We don't really even know what the void is under, under the road, but it could affect the highway. It's close enough to the fog line, and, you know, it's all coned off right now. And so it is, it is an emergency that we need to address right away.
It also is interfering with our required parking lot, that we have a date to finish building with ODOT. So it becomes a very time-critical project, also.
Could you, somebody explain what by declaring it an emergency, what does that allow the city to do? Are we, mean, we go outside our normal processes?
And the resolution that's on later, associated with this, this report also asks, we enter into an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT to assist in funding. It also provides the basis for, in your code, in 205080, exemptions from public contracting rules, to declare an emergency and follow not the normal public contracting process. If you look at the resolution, there is basically a recitation of the nature of the emergency as has been outlined here, incorporation of this report into the resolution as authority for that, explains that it's necessary to, because of the time constraints, set aside the normal, formal, public procurement process, and to enter into an emergency contract. And in the, in the resolution, you're basically delegating or directing, the city manager may enter into a direct award, which means he can just go hire a qualified contractor. If time permits, he's authorized to seek competitive quotes from a list of qualified contractors, and we're hoping ODOT can help us with the list of people that are qualified. This has unusually difficult conditions, in that there is a lot of water and...
The flowing sand.
Flowing sand, which has, which causes an additional difficulty. Flowing sand, which has, which causes an additional difficulty. And it calls for basically getting on-site within about 20 days of approval of the resolution. So it's very time-constrained, the nature of the emergency, that's the basis for the resolution.
Questions from council to staff? Pull the mic down to your way, please.
When they replace, are they going to put a concrete back inside there?
Well, when they were, when the pipe bursted, it was going to be an HDPE pipe, which is a thick-walled pipe, but now I believe what we're going to look at is a PVC pipe, which is similar to the other pipes that we're putting in that project for sewer lines. So that's a plastic, a plastic pipe.
Any other questions?
Would it be as an alternative, instead of having to dig deeper to the 12-foot level, is there some way that the, there could be a pumping of up to the eight-foot level to avoid all that?
Well, that's usually the problem, the power is out, and so this is a gravity-type overflow system, and so if you can get there fast enough, you know, you could try and put some other pumps in, but it, it makes it into, it's not an automatic thing that happens. You have to have people there. And the way this one's set up, it's a gravity, so if something happens to the pump station, it overflows, it automatically goes to this deep manhole on the east side, and then it raises up to the point where gravity's across. And so we looked, we looked at every single option that you can imagine.
I thought we had an automatic system, so if power failed, that our generator kicked in and we had power.
We do, we do have a backup generator. Systems can fail. We can also get overloaded to where the pump station can't handle the load. That is going to happen fairly infrequently, but we still have a downstream issue on the main that leaves that pump station and goes to the plant, and we know we've improved that situation, but we don't know for sure if we've cured it. Any system, any major system that has a lot of inflow and infiltration is going to occasionally, hopefully rarely, have an overflow situation. And if we were to pump it, that really simply means we'd have another pump station. They're pretty expensive. So the alternative we haven't talked about very much, and it's one I don't really favor, is to not have an overflow, to just let it flow over the highway, which I think we can do. And again, it's mostly, it's mostly going to be at stormwater times. We know of no requirement that means that we have to put it underground. I don't like that solution very well, and I think long-term, I think it would only take one or two overflows before somebody's going to come in here and say, it's time.
I wouldn't want to be down on the downside of that.
The positive thing about this is that it happened before the new road has been built, and, you know, we discovered...
For sure.
This pipe was a problem, and our collections crew, they were investigating this pipe, and that's how we found the concrete that was broken.
My other question is, if that's such an alluvial soil, how can you get a base for that, that pipe to stay on it without sagging or whatever?
No, that's part of the bid, there'll be, and the worst part of it is excavation. And so when they went down the 26 feet, they weren't able to shore it, and I think actually the shoring is still in the ground there because their attempts failed. But they'll be able to have a base for the pipe.
Okay.
The other difficulty with all this is that we've got contractors all over the place. We've got Northwest Natural, we've got Pacific Power, we've got our city project, we've got the ODOT project. This is not a good thing to have happen, but we want to get a qualified contractor who we have confidence, and we will solicit competitive quotations. It's not going to be a general opening. We'll solicit those that we know have that capability of handling a tricky project like this, and go from there.
Chester, did you have something?
I just wanted to thank you, Lila, for having one ray of sunshine pointed out regarding occurring before the new road was put in.
Yes. And the parking lot.
Yeah. Great. Then with no other questions, then we'll deal with resolution at the end.
We do need a motion to approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT. We don't have the actual agreement, we have some, basically, the memo explains the substance of it, so you'd be delegating to Mr. Hawker to execute that agreement, and to Mr. Hawker and myself to make whatever changes need to be made.
Great. And we'll deal with it then, or are you saying you will?
I think we're looking for a motion now.
Now?
I would so move what he said.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Naracus.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good hunting.
Mayor, the only other thing I have, just a real quick comment about, we heard earlier tonight that somebody was having difficulty opening up one of our packet materials. You know, we, there are different versions of Adobe out there that we use and that people use, and it's not always intuitive to know how to open it. The stuff's there. If somebody's having trouble, if they give us a call, and at worst comes the worst, we will email them copy of something or even snail mail it. Keep in mind that the agenda and the packet comes out on Wednesdays before a Monday meeting, and if people have a serious interest in what's going on, if they could look at that before the last minute, if they have trouble, usually on the phone, we can help them through how to open something that they're having difficulties with. But we're dealing with so many different systems. We're dealing with Mac systems, we're dealing with PCs, different versions of programs, and we can't make it absolutely simple for everybody. But we'll help them through it if they just let us know, so.
Good to hear. And yes, it would invite the public to call in to the information line, actually, or the main administration line.
Or the city recorder.
And get assistance.
Or me. And somebody, call somebody, help. We'll help you.
Mr. Appicello, did you have anything in this section?
I don't, except that, you know, it seems like some people have left, but we did have more people here earlier about the marijuana thing, and I'm not sure if you want to, last time you took it out of order. I don't, it's up to you if you want to do that. You do have a number of other items, another, a few ordinances on the agenda before you get to that. That one's number 16.
Yeah.
So...
You know, it's exciting that would be, I think I paid a price for doing that last time because you've just added more to, plus the ones we didn't get to. So we're going to start working through this if we can, now that it's been two hours into. So I, first ordinance we have tonight?
Actually, Your Honor, I think under...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Deliberations.
You're right, deliberations, don't even get to get down there yet. Under council deliberations, reminding the council that, and confirming that our next date for deliberation on the VRD package legislative amendments, and will be at our council meeting June 23rd, 6:00 PM. So that's confirming that. And you heard some public comments tonight regarding our earlier deliberations. So now if we can go to ordinance number 2014-05, and this is a second reading.
This is second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 1752, Supplementary Regulations and Exceptions, Amending Section 1752-060, Clear Vision Requirement, and Section 1752-070, Measurement of Clear Vision Areas, Updating and Clarifying Vision Triangle Definitions and Adding Exemptions. Your Honor, there were no written comments submitted on this before, by the deadline, and there are no changes recommended, so we simply need a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 2014-05 and adopt the proposed ordinance.
I would so move.
Secured.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2014-05. Any discussion? So I recall, we pretty well went through this, getting through the first reading and pushing into the second. Seeing, hearing, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Naracus.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have ordinance number 2014-06, also a second reading.
Unlike the last ordinance, this ordinance did have some changes, some of which were triggered by discussion at the last meeting. Under your charter, I have to read the changes first, and then I will conduct second reading, and you would approve the ordinance as read with the changes. I point out, the first change was essentially that the Public Works Director was, or designee was named in the ordinance, and the city manager asked that it be the city manager or his designee, so I drafted some language to address that. I also addressed, I think, a question the mayor had about the fact the special events permit was referenced in 1216015, and I made, added a section two to clarify that responsibility for the special event permit under Chapter 516 will be transferred from the VCB director to the city manager or designee, who at the same time I designate the, or rather, the council's designated, the initial designee will be the Public Works Director, and it may be changed later by order of the city manager. So with that, I'll read the changes. In Section 1216015, free use permits, fees required, the first sentence is changed to say, except or otherwise provided in city code or resolution. The city of Lincoln City permits free recreational use of city parks, and then it continues, and that's because frankly, we set fees in resolutions. B in that 1216015 reads, an exclusive use permit, Lincoln LCMC 12.16, or a special event permit, LCMC Chapter 5.16, shall be obtained from the city manager or designee, unless altered by subsequent order of the city manager, the initial designee for exclusive use permits is the director of the community center. That's the only change in that section. You had asked questions about 1216015-sub-four. I reworded it to be more clear, and the activity, it now reads, the activity involves charging admission or sale or use of alcohol or other commercial activity, or is likely to or requires provision of additional public safety or city services, including but not limited to EMS, fire, or police protection, water sewer, placing, removing, opening, or closing park access roads, access control bollards, gates or fences, or the special preparation of fields or other park facilities. Be advised, large special events requiring multiple permits under several code chapters, e.g., alcohol use, noise variance, concession agreement, exclusive use, should be processed as a consolidated special event permit pursuant to Chapter 5.16. In Section D, Paragraph 1, on page 3, it now reads the manager instead of the director. Also, that in two places, unless the manager imposes conditions. Under 1F, it now reads, the director is expressly authorized to impose, I should probably say the manager, is expressly authorized to impose reasonable permit conditions, including but not limited to alterations to adapt park facilities to proposed use, including reimbursement for added facility costs and labor, to mitigate adverse impacts on neighbors, or to protect city facilities, participants, and the public, including but not limited to hours of operation, deposit for cleanup, reimbursement overtime costs, participant liability waivers, insurance, physical separation of different uses, or such other conditions as deemed necessary or desirable to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. The next sentence then changes director to manager, and so I'll note that in F, the word director should be manager. That's on line 22. On page 5, actions by the manager shall be completed within seven days. Any final action by the manager concerning issuance of denial permit shall be done in writing. And then on page 6, again, with the written consent of the manager, under I, and then this is the section two I referred to, transfer responsibilities referencing, referenced in Section 1205015. Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter 5.16, Special Events, is hereby amended consistent with Section 1 above, Section 1205015, to change the responsible city official for processing special event permits to city manager or designee. All references to Executive Director of the Visitor and Convention Bureau and Executive Director in Chapter 5.16 shall be changed to city manager. Unless altered by subsequent order of the city manager, Chapter 5.16 shall specify that the initial designee for special event permits is the Public Works Director. All complete special events applications received and currently in the custody of the Visitor and Convention Bureau shall be transferred to the Public Works Director for processing, and completeness determination date establishes the order in which the applications are processed. Incomplete applications shall be processed, shall not be processed. That's the changes to that ordinance. This is the second reading of ordinance 2014-06, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12.16, Park Use Regulations, adding permit process for use of city facilities consistent with existing policy. And I did receive a recommendation in favor of this ordinance from the Parks Board.
Great. Thank you.
I would move that we adopt ordinance number 2014-06 as amended.
Does that include approval of second reading?
An approval of second reading, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Sprague?
Yes, couple, two or three items. We just had the Kiwanis Easter egg hunt at Regatta Grounds, and we've done that for, not at the Regatta Grounds, for 67 years, but in Lincoln City in two locations for 67 years. We've never had to have a permit. If we need a permit, I think that's okay, fine. But I think that there should be a provision in there, that there's an automatic annual review, renewal of any ongoing annual event that takes place in a park, so you don't have to go to the thing year after year and get the same, the same application and go through that process when it's the same event year after year. This thing says, under C, number four, applications shall be submitted at least 10 days prior to the requested usage, but could or should be submitted 30 days prior to allow time for appeals. Why not just make that 30 days and let it, let it go with that? Because if somebody wants a big event of some kind, they should have some planning in place long before 10 days, so I think that should be 30 days. And there's one other item that I, that I was thinking that, it says, an applicant will ensure that a permit is readily available and displayed for any activity for which a permit is required under the terms of this chapter. Well, how do you display a permit when you're putting on an event like we did? So I'm just throwing out some, what I think is some things that could clarify and maybe make it easier for people who are going through this.
So let me capture them and help me, I've got the one, page 3, where you're talking about the 10 days, page number four. Applications shall be submitted at least 10 days prior to requested usage. Applications should be submitted at least 30 days prior to usage to allow time for appeals.
There's a shall in the first instance, and a should in the second.
I understand that. It just seems to me, though, that...
I would argue that if I, depending on the event, that I like the 10-day, you, quite frankly, because I'm taking a risk, and I know I'm taking a risk because I don't get an appeal if it gets turned down. You always have the option, 30 days, you know, as you've suggested. You do have the 30 days.
That's correct.
But, but I can then apply up to 10 days before the event. Otherwise, I would, quite frankly, would be arguing, not everybody plans 30 days, depending on what the event is, and I'd like to give them a shorter window to, you know, be more spontaneous.
Okay, I can go along with that.
Okay. So, but you're... So, but you're right, you know, the thirty day, you better do that if you, any chance of you get it turned down and you're doing some heavy planning.
The other, the other reason to submit early is that it's a first come, first served basis. So we have seen with special event permits, that people come in and they want to be the first one to have an event, and they submit, and then they find out that, that they, they want to basically have an exclusive permit and they don't want someone else to come in. And, and so there's this little first come, first served kind of approach, where we've actually given the first one in a right of first refusal. This happened this past year. So, I hesitate to say, well, I almost put in something about, you cannot submit more than X number of days ahead of your event, because I believe this just happened, we got somebody coming in saying, I want to put in for a special event for, oh gosh, it won't be for eight months, but I want to be first. And, and so you do bear some risk. At the same time, we also don't want to lock tie, this, you're getting exclusive use of a park, possibly, unless you're triggered by an event where you're not going to ask for exclusive use. But that's one of the problems here, you can't write it for every situation, so.
On, on the reoccurring events, I'm, I'm a little bit torn on that. On one hand, I think, well, we should be able to grant a permit for a multi-year, not forever, but for a multi-year. But then we find out that it wasn't held, and the permit was ongoing, and we denied somebody else. So I'm leaning against that, but, but maybe we can somehow have a streamlined process for renewing a special event on request? Is that, is it, would that be possible under the ordinance?
In this ordinance, remember that we were going to be, we're coming back with application requirements for adoption by council in a resolution. Part of the deal here was to reduce what's in the code and render it in a resolution. We could add a sentence that simply says, there shall be a separate, shorter, or expedited renewal application. And we can just, staff will have to work on that. So I would add, if you want to do this, then application requirements and fees on C on page three. Official city forms detailing application requirements shall be adopted by resolution of the city council. There shall be a expedited renewal application period, and then all applications shall be signed by the responsible parties.
I guess if I could pick on the Kiwanis, who think they do it the same every year, but I think Easter changes around the date.
It always follows, it's, it's a day before Easter.
I understand, I understand. The date of Easter changes, though.
Yes.
And so, for clarity, because not all of us understand when Easter is, a date works a lot better, you know, the actual date? Thus, the permitting process where you have to say, March X, or February, or January, or some kind of specific day, rather than assume that it's the Saturday before Easter and hope that somebody knows.
I'm just having trouble having to have a permit period.
Understand. We'll make it short for you.
I, I don't know if you're interested in the language I just read, but if, you would have to add it to the motion if you were going to do that.
Yeah, he...
I will. But if, if it will get us out of here faster, I'll add it to my, my motion.
What, and let me, you had one more, did we cover all three? Wrote, your thirty day...
Just having to have the permit readily avail, or the...
Oh, posted, posted.
Posted, I don't know how you posted at the Regatta Grounds for an Easter egg hunt.
You just put it around the Easter bunny. There's a sign.
But I, I'm assuming on a stake, you know, out in the, the area where, you know, because what you're, what it's doing is just, to me, clarifying that you have gone through the process and that part of the park, you know, you've got domain over for...
I don't know how you post it.
Let me get you a stick and stick it in the ground, a little, I got a campaign sign, I'll let you have.
Glad you said that, Nick.
Yeah. Would that...
I, I...
Grappuccino, or you...
I thought the language had posted or immediately available or something, so I thought there was some, you know, you have it available. Someone says, why are you here doing this? Here's my permit. Some responsible parties there. I don't think you have to tie it to the Easter bunny and...
Say, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to quickly remind us that the reason this came up, and then kind of morphed into a special events permit discussion, and now is back to what we were thinking about initially with city property, is because we were having a, a problem with a applicant that had come back a couple of times. And so we want, of course, we're not going to have a problem with the Kiwanis or...
No, no, actually, the, the reason that staff has brought this up was not, I mean, you're, you're right, that was an issue, and we were able to deal with that issue, although we didn't have the kind of ordinance authority that we wanted to. But the more important issue is, a, a reading of the ordinance as it exists today reaches pretty far as to what a special event is. And virtually, almost anything you can think of turned out to be a special event. And we had to narrow that down some, or it became totally unworkable. I mean, just, just what people do on private property turned out to be a special event. And it was unworkable.
Well, this is part of that effort. This is, again, this is for the exclusive use permit for parks, and this is part of the effort to narrow the special event ordinance by creating a permit process for things, well, frankly, they're just not special, they're the things you do at the parks. And it provides legal support for our existing process. That's the purpose of this ordinance. I will be coming back with amendments, further amendments to the special events ordinance.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have a fee in this? We don't, do we?
No, fees are established by resolution, and again, the, we're kind of leaning toward reexamining the fees that we charge, because if we don't charge a fee, we could take advantage of the immunity statute.
In general, in general, I would prefer not to have a fee, except where the provision of the ordinance kicks in, where it's such a big event that it's having, where we have to have extra police officers or something like that, where the city is going to be out of pocket. Then we require insurance, then we require a fee. But for the general permit, I, I'm going to be recommending no fee. We're immune that way, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Mr. Grappuccino's...
One other argument.
For which?
The Easter egg hunt is not exclusive use of the park, because we don't use the entire park. I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, thank you.
It's exclusive use of the park.
To the far west end, he's exclusive. Mr. Grappuccino, the wording you used was for what, so I want to make sure...
There shall, there shall be an expedited renewal application.
Will you modify your...
I would modify my motion.
And the second, agree? Still a second? Whoever that was, was that Henry?
Yeah.
You modify, okay.
Second, yeah, but, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion?
I hope not.
Easter bunny.
Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yeah.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yep.
Eggleton. Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norikas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And we do appreciate the Kiwanis. All right, we have a second reading on ordinance two oh one four dash oh seven, second reading.
Hey, Your Honor, I, on this one, I also have several changes to read, but I need to ask you some questions first, because if you read the council communication, I, I basically give you a couple options. I'm just going to quickly go through, a lot of them, I think I captured what, what you asked me to do. There were just a few where we weren't sure, so I gave you, I gave you a couple options, and I'll explain those options. And I'll read the changes once you give me direction, and we'll read, then I'll do the second reading. I know that you had some testimony about this document first being changed from what was heard at the public hearings. The rule on changing ordinances, of course, has to do with land use ordinances, this is not a land use ordinance, so that particular rule about change does not apply. I also do not believe that this is a, there, any changes here are substantial from what was discussed at public hearing. You did have a discussion about it not being available, and it should be, the second reading should be continued because of problems with the software. I get the error message every time I click on it, and if I just click again, it comes up. But I understand how that could be frustrating to people. So I'll, I'll tell you at the onset, if you don't want me to, I, I do need you to give me some instructions about, direction about my questions here. But if you don't want me to read all of this tonight, you can give me direction on the few, two or three questions I have, and then we can redo first reading tonight and set second reading for the next meeting. And by doing that, I would not have to read everything. So you have that option, and you can wait until after we ask the questions, or you can talk about it now, it's up to you.
So we get a longer list next time?
Yeah. I, I would ask council to consider a rereading tonight, first reading, and then getting a printed copy, so the revised copy.
I agree.
Fine, agree.
So I'll, I'll ask you the questions to give me direction, and then I'll just redo first reading, and everything will be in there, and we won't have to read it at second reading.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the, the council communication first addresses the sixteen occupant and five-bedroom limitation that we discussed, and I did have a conversation with BCD staff, and they concurred that what I've been telling you about having authority in your own ordinance to establish the five-bedroom and sixteen natural person limits is permissible, that that is in fact, a city could do that under its own police power. That's not something they would be enforcing, that would be our own regulation. So it would be a violation of the licensing ordinance punishable by, as a class A violation, like any other violation of our code. And to remind you, for building code violations, the, it was working very well, we would cite people to municipal court, and they would be required to answer for violations of the state building code. Well, that was working well, so the legislature took it away from us. They changed it in two thousand and ten and said we had to follow a civil administrative penalty process. So if you're violating the building code now, and again, this is the building code, not your licensing ordinance, you're violating the sixteen occupant limitation in the building code, or you're violating the five-bedroom limitation in the building code. The process is, you get an order to comply from the building official. If you fail to comply within seven days, it's a prerequisite to issuing you a citation for, it's actually not a citation, it's a notice of violation, it's notice, notice of civil administrative penalty. And it's the same kind of penalty, daily offense, for each offense is a, is a daily fine. So if you violate the five-bedroom limitation, you could get up to a one thousand dollar fine per day imposed by the building official. However, you then have the right to appeal to the Building Code Board of Appeals. And if you failed, and if you don't succeed in your appeal, then we can cite you to municipal court. So the legislature installed this administrative process in front of getting citation. Not a single notice of administrative civil penalty has been issued here since that two thousand and ten change. So that, in, in part, would explain to you why, we kind of have, are a little split on this. Richard Townsend is of the opinion that we should go with the occupancy limitations of the code. As you discussed last time, it would be referential in the sense that you're just saying, you shall comply with the state building code limitations in effect at the time you built your home or had your VRD. So that's Richard's recommendation, go with the referential thing. So you're basically left with building code enforcement, as I just described. So if there's a violation, it's not a violation of your ordinance, it's a violation of the building code, you got to go through that civil administrative penalty process. And I have worked with, with building department staff to try to get them started on doing that. Whereas my recommendation was, the way it was originally drafted, you use your police power and say sixteen and five, and it's a violation of the licensing ordinance. Again, this is completely your decision, it's only a recommendation, and I just need to know, and I should probably read, if you go with the, the original language, I don't have to read it, if you go with where you appeared to be leaning last time with the referential adoption, I will just read that language. I did include reference to the Uniform Housing Code, which is still in your code, and still acts as a limitation on the number, the actual number of people. And again, that code requires like seventy square feet for the first two people, and then fifty square feet for each additional person in a room used for sleeping. It's not a really tough standard, but for a small VRD, it will act to give them a number which is lower. So again, this is the first, and again, at the last meeting, you were leaning toward the referential adoption, let the building department enforce it, and I explained that process.
Thoughts from council? Police power or building code?
I still like the reference to the building code. Over that's where.
Could you say why, Mr. Ryan?
I just think it's a cleaner way to do it, in my estimation. We reference state code all the time. I, but, you know, I don't have a dog in the fight, so it doesn't make any difference which direction we go. I, I just happen to think, I, I like going that direction. But I'll support either one.
I'll just point out that the referential adoption will follow the normal building code process, which means it's not retrospective, it's prospective. So if you built your house in two thousand and nine, and in July two thousand and ten, they came in with the sixteen limit, you're not subject to the sixteen limit, you are subject to the five-bedroom limitation, which has been around since the seventies or, or before. So that's the typical, normal way the building code operates. There, I think, back from looking back at our workshop about a year ago, I think we told you, and Richard told me again today, there are about thirteen VRDs which currently advertise more than sixteen. And they may or may not, some of them may be violating that, the state building code. Some of them may have been built long enough ago that they're exempted from it, or would not be subject to an enforcement action by the building department. So it's up to you, but at least we did what the, the committee wanted. We put the six, the numbers out there, and we clarified it.
Mr. Townsend, may I have a question? Have, have we approved VRDs with six or more bedrooms and/or seventeen or more occupants?
I, I'm not sure. All the VRDs that I know of, when, when we looked about a year ago, had been built prior to two thousand and ten. So that sixteen-person standard did not apply to any of them that exist, as far as I know. Now, there may have been an earlier standard, I know there was a, a five-person standard years ago. So each case, I guess we would have to look and see, see exactly what standard was in effect at the time the building was built.
How about the five-bedroom standard?
I don't know that we have. I'm, I'm just trying to think of, of the ones I know of. I know that sometimes we get a building permit application in, and... I know that sometimes we get a building permit application in, and it's clear, they know there's a five-bedroom limit because there's a room that's the study, and another room that's the office, or recreation room, or something like that. And, and those rooms may end up being used as sleeping spaces, but we did not approve them as bedroom.
We have only approved five bedrooms, max.
To the best of my knowledge, the best, the, the most we have approved is five.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a comment. I think I prefer going with the, the building code approach. The main reason for that is that that's a national code, rather than something that we may have done by ordinance ourselves, and I think that's, I just feel like that's a little more substantial than, than something we may have crafted.
And again, the, Mr. Appicello, the building code referral that both these gentlemen have, would be the referential standard, is that?
Option two in the memo.
Option two, right.
Basically, where I did add reference to the Uniform Housing Code, because that is in your code, and it is a state code that you've adopted, and it does act as a limitation on the number of occupants, although it's not a real big limitation. So simply, it would still be that you can only have five bedrooms unless you were built prior to the five-bedroom standard coming in, and that was way back in the 70s. And then the 16, again, the effective date was July 10. So you may have a limitation based on the housing code applying to your property, but in terms of the numeric limitation, you will not have that, except for the housing code.
And built after July 10?
Yeah. If you, if you were built after July of 2010, you will have both.
Right. Okay. So two of you suggested that option two. Any, anybody have an alternative, or?
I'd like to go with the building code also.
Okay. So nobody's, everybody seems to be in line, so Gary, did you want, have something?
No, I, um... The, the thing that has been going around in my head, off and on against, essentially since the public testimony period, was we had a meeting, a special meeting about safety standards, and then we discussed it at a couple of council meetings, and I didn't really hear anything from anyone. I became concerned, so to speak, with the five-bedroom, 16 people, 16 natural person. Part of the, the ordinances that were, or the ordinance that we're discussing, primarily because of people that have been operating in excess of that, of those guidelines. And when people sometimes keep coming up and saying, "We want to do something to put people out of business, and, you know, part of this is putting me out of business," so on and so forth, I'll just speak for myself, I don't want to do that, and I've stated that in the past. What was explained to me is essentially what has been said was, is that the five-bedroom is not an option. I mean, that's been in the building code for a long time. And, and whether we, if we were to decide amongst ourselves that we would put in our ordinance that we wanted more than five bedrooms, we, we could not do that. We cannot exceed state authority. The 16 people or natural persons, as the ordinance states, I guess we have some leeway over that. And to the degree that that gives some people options that they've had in the past, that new people would not have if they were to come and apply for a permit today, I, I have less of an issue with that, myself. So I, I guess I'm taking a long time in saying, I would like to go with option two. But I, I just wanted to provide some context for my thinking and not have people think that I'm being cavalier about this.
Sure.
Or reckless about it.
I'm gonna just read this section, just, it seems like, and, and I just want to be clear, because this language is not in the ordinance, I'm gonna read it right now. Occupancy, "The occupancy of the VRD shall be limited based on the 1997 Uniform Housing Code, but in no event shall occupancy exceed the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. Lodging house limitations applicable to the residential structure or other predecessor, predecessor, residential code, for example, the UBC lodging house limitations." Those are the 1976 ones. Occupancy may exceed lodging house limitations only in vacation rental dwellings constructed pursuant to or retrofitted for compliance with the current code in effect at the time of the VRD application or renewal, Oregon Structural Specialty Code. Occupancy and lodging house limitations shall only be permitted in commercial zoning districts or such other districts as council may authorize by ordinance. The license shall state clearly the numeric occupancy limit for the dwelling, including specifically the number of bedrooms." So again, that language will be added to the ordinance, and then I will not have to read it again, that second reading.
Okay.
The next item was this, and I don't know if you want to vote separately, or you just want to just wait to the end, and...
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and keep going?
Okay. The next item was tsunami map posting, and this is all Mr. Hawker's fault, so when you hear complaints about the number of ordinances and how long it takes, you just, he's chiming in here at the last minute to add things. So we added the vacation rental dwelling shall have posted the appropriate north-south Agami tsunami evacuation map. I didn't really hear any objection to that at the council discussion. On the spa and pool posting, staff didn't add any language to the ordinance, but we're recommending that you consider possibly requiring a posting that would read vacation rental dwelling with hot tubs or pools shall post the contact information for the certified pool operator maintaining the pool or hot tub facility. Again, you don't have to do this, but if you were to do it, we'd add it in Section 4B as a new paragraph 12. Again, you had the young lady come down from the county, and that was based on a complaint that you had untrained, no pool school, grad, no pool school graduation, I don't know if you get a little cap and gown for that or not, but...
One or two.
That they, they're people that hadn't had that minimal training, basically doing hot tub maintenance. They're tapping the cleaning crew to basically do that.
So, Mr. Appicello, what, what, and you got it right, because counsel chose not to include it in this, but you're testing whether this kind of language would be, and, and posting information would be on the same place where the tsunami posting is?
Yeah, it's, it's along with the re, this section is the required postings, yeah.
So what this would be on the, in theory, back of the door, just another source of...
It would tell you where the person that knows how to operate the hot tub and knows could fix any problems, and, but again, it's kind of requiring them to be a certified person. You could take out the word certified pool operator, you could just say information for the person maintaining the pool or hot tub, if you didn't want them to be a certified person. Again, I, I thought that we, since we had the woman from the county come and give you that information, we might consider it. Again, I know the council was going the other way, so just giving you an option.
I, I have a little trouble listing it, because I can see my guests dialing for dollars and would want to have some control if I were owner or property manager. So I don't know how to deal with that, other than...
If, if this isn't something you want to do, I hadn't thought about that.
Let me, let me check with council. I understand the importance of the health, and I, you know, we heard that before, though we didn't get much information of how many, you know, specifics, I, I can understand there could be, and probably is, but I don't know how far, what's new for you tonight under, under the spa and hot tub?
No, I, I agree with you, Your Honor.
Just not having anything, does anybody want it to be there?
Use it at your own risk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
You know, I, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
When the lady from the county came and testified to us, she said that, I, I think it was her, someone, someone stated that maybe just as a suggestion during the licensing time, it could be stated, the hot tub could be emptied once a week, or something to that effect.
Right.
There would be nothing, no, no inspection relative to that, just kind of a statement. And she, and she had thought, and she took her time to come and testify to us, that that would, that would be, I don't want to seem important, but she thought it would, it would be okay to do that.
I think that falls under that category of best practices.
Best practices.
And we can always bring, you know, that information forward to the applicants. So it's a no on number three. Then the, the next item is the disclaimer that was included as part of the motion, and I added a additional sworn statement to basically let people know that just because they obtained a license from us, doesn't mean that we're authorizing that, or somehow becoming responsible for them for other state law, federal, state compliance. So this, they have to acknowledge, basically, that getting a permit from us can't be interpreted as a waiver modification of other state, federal, or local law. If you need something from the county in order to do what you're proposing to do, you gotta go to the county, and just getting a permit from us doesn't make that happen. Same thing with the state, same thing with the federal government. So that language is there, it's already in the ordinance, I don't have to read it.
Yeah.
Cross references, I'll just, I'm just asking in the ordinance to authorize the court clerk to reference, add the two sections, 514055 and 060, where previously I simply indicated it would be one, that's already in the ordinance. The clarification, I clarified language on page three, page four, page five, and page seven, to address some of the, the concerns and comments that you guys had when you were, frankly, going over this with a fine-tooth comb. So we've made those adjustments to the language, I think it, it gets your meaning across. I did find in one place, the, the word should be "in" instead of "on," having to do with one of those changes I just read. It was just a typo. And then the last one was the distribution of contact information, you guys had removed that from the last, and so right now in the ordinance, it's marked "reserved." And staff had in the memo last time, recommended language, posting of contact information. Owner shall post a small placard or sign on the front-facing side of the building advising neighbors and tenants of the name and telephone number of the VRD local representative. Alarm signs should be located next to this sign. So that was a recommendation from last time that you did not discuss. Again, in the only discussion, and you may still not be ready to discuss it, in which case, the ordinance currently just says "reserved" there. So if you don't want to do that, that's fine. The other thing is that the effective date of this ordinance, and this is in the ordinance, I don't have to read it, the effective date is set as January 1, 2015. So there's plenty of time for individuals to prepare for the implementation of this ordinance. So the only remaining one would be, are you interested in posting of contact information? You went back and forth on this when you discussed it a couple of meetings back.
The offset would be, we would not then do the mailing of renew, of renewals? Was it just renewals?
I believe so, yeah.
We would still do it on applications.
Well, again, this, again, I, I don't want you to confuse the fact that we have not gone into the ordinance and deleted the process that currently exists for approving a VRD application.
But that would, that would be our intent.
This, eventually, but this language that was removed last time had to deal with noticing people within 250 feet when there was a change in the name of the local representative, and that's, you know, so that was what we were trying to address, and you wiped that section out last time, and we clarified, we're not changing the process. I will bring back to you discussion about the process and what notice we will bring, but that's not the issue here today.
And I think Mr. Ryan beat us up pretty hard on this one last time, right, Mr. Ryan? Yeah?
You know, and again, I, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary, or that it will serve the purpose that we're talking about doing. If, but again, I, I don't have a dog in the fight, so if, if the rest of the council wants it, I, I'm fine with it, I just, I don't, you know...
But you're in agreement of eliminating the, the mailings out of...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
To satisfy that need.
You know, but that's...
Anybody else have a concern? Can we move ahead then with the recommended, just doing a post-small placard card or something?
Yes.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So I've read that section, so I don't have to read it next time. So then this would be first reading. Again, Kathy, we're not doing second reading, we're repeating first reading of an order cementing the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter 5.14 Vacation Rental Dwelling License, adding approval criteria including health and safety standards to the VRD license provisions of the code. And ask for a...
Go ahead.
A, a motion to approve first reading and set second reading for May 12 at the normal time, and that the council authorize written comments to be received by noon the Wednesday prior, which is, I don't know, the 5th?
I move what he said.
May the 7th.
7th?
May the 7th.
I'll second it.
Mayor, before you go forward, Richard, I want to go back to number one, the first...
Yes.
First issue you had in, in option two, in the fourth line from the bottom, starts with structural specialty code.
Okay.
Should, shouldn't it then say occupancy in excess of lodging house limitations?
So the, the correct reading of, should be occupancy in excess of lodging house limitations shall only be permitted in commercial zoning districts. Thank you, Richard.
My motion to what he just said.
All right.
I'll amend the second.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for catching that.
In excess of?
Yes. In excess of lodging house limitations shall only be permitted in commercial zoning districts. So again, it's a referential to the state law lodging house limitations. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. We, we have a motion with a second for first reading. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
And, and if this is what you just said, I haven't connected the dots, but under occupancy, where it says occupancy in excess of five bedrooms or 16, I'll just say persons, shall only be permitted in commercial zoning districts. I mean, that, that is a state...
Well, I think you're reading option one.
You're reading the wrong one.
It's the one below.
Option two. Keep scrolling down.
Well, yeah, but I didn't get to finish answering my question. Okay, forget, I'm going up to option, up to, oh, okay, I've got it, I get it now. Sorry about that.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Chester?
Do we have consensus, Mr. Mayor, that we are choosing option two here?
Yes, we do. We did.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I get it now.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Morakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This is the first reading, that was the first reading, right?
Yes. And it'll come back modified?
Some people will have a chance to.
Right. Pull it down.
Yeah. Submit written testimony to this.
We're three hours into.
Let's work through it. I don't really want to come back and face these things. Okay.
That's what I needed to hear, is everybody else in agreement?
Yeah.
All right, hold on then. We have ordinance number 2014-08, first reading.
Your Honor, this is first reading of ordinance 2014-08, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, amending chapter 1704, definitions, section 1704-020, amending the list of accessory uses in the following zoning districts, chapter 1716, R1, chapter 1720, RM, chapter 1728, RC, chapter 1732, GC, chapter 1740, RR, chapter 1750, OP, amending chapter 1780, provisions applying special uses, adding section 178110 relating to standards for accessory dwelling units. Your Honor, this is first reading. Ask for a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-08, accessory dwelling units, and set second reading for May 12, 2014, and authorize receipt of written comments into the record until noon on May 7.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second discussion? And I'm trying to find it. Mr. Townsend, perhaps you could assist us, I remember some notes that I took on where accessory dwellings could be established, you know, obviously residential zones, but I guess I'm wondering all lot sizes?
We said if there were, look on page five, beginning on line seven?
Ah, yes, my note. So.
It says, it says you've got to have at least 3,500 square feet or more. If it's not up to the minimum lot size, the accessory dwelling unit has to be a part of the primary dwelling unit.
Okay, so is, and 3,500 is a conforming lot size?
It is in Nell Scott, that's about the only place.
Okay. Maybe develop. So I guess what I'm, I'm wondering about is why would we want, I think, Gordy, you brought up before, in a, on a small lot to put another unit, other than, and I think you were trying to point me there, with it has to be part of the building or part of the existing structure? How does that? Is that the one with above the, above the garage? Would that be a?
If the garage is detached, then it wouldn't be allowed to be above the garage.
On?
And chances are, on a substandard lot, there's not going to be a detached garage.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, is it clear, or where I'm going, is, is it better to put, you know, not on, non-conforming lot sizes? Or should we even encourage?
Well, we have a lot of non-conforming lots, like Rhodes End is a good example. There's a 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, and most of the lots there are 5,000 square feet. So probably half the lots in Rhodes End are non-conforming, maybe 40%. I did the numbers once, it was a very substantial number. So I think as, if we don't allow it on non-conforming lots, we're really, really reducing the places where they could go.
Richard, I'd like to clarify that those Rhodes End lots that are non-conforming were non-conforming before annexation and after.
That's right, under, under the existing county.
We did not make them non-conforming.
It could become conforming someday if we, you know, four years from now adopt a lot size that would make them conform.
Is, is your concern that I, I guess I wasn't aware that there was, did you say Nell Scott has, one of the districts has 3,500?
I believe it's 3,500, yeah.
Other than that, I think, aren't we talking 5,000 as our minimum?
Yes.
Okay. So you could just change the minimum to say, with an area of 5,000 square feet or more, except for Nell Scott, which is 3,500. So if that's where your reservation is coming from, is that there's smaller, you know, smaller than 5,000?
Well, that's why I certainly wanted to encourage them in, on larger lots where it can accommodate, so I don't know how I'd take advice there. That's all that kind of jumped out at me was, and I think Gordy, you had talked a little bit about trying to, certainly bigger lots, and we talked about limiting the size of the structure, I think was part of the discussion.
I mean, you could after, you could vote on the, the motion, and then if you want to direct myself and staff to maybe come back with some alternative language, if you want to talk about it more at second reading.
Okay. Yeah. Any other areas of concern on accessory? We then have a motion and a second. We could have a roll call, first reading.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton? Ellingson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Counsel, would you mind if we had asked staff to maybe bring some options back on that square footage issue and conforming, non-conforming lot?
I don't have a problem.
Be fine.
Okay. Thank you. We then have first reading on ordinance number 2014-9.
Your Honor, this is first reading of 2014-09, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.04, Transient Room Tax, Section 3.04-010, Definitions, Section 3.04-050, Exemptions, and Section 3.04-140, Lean, Correcting and Clarifying TRT Definitions, Exemptions, and Lean Recording. Staff would request that the council move to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-09 and set second reading for May 12, 2014, authorize receipt of written comments into the record until noon on May 7, 2014. If you haven't read the memo, I can summarize, but just go ahead and ask me to if you want me to.
Is there a motion first?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing goes with discussion, and maybe Reed?
Your Honor, this is essentially HB 2656, concerned using intermediaries, and this clarified that if you use an intermediary, and this is something like Expedia or some other service, that the, it clarifies the rate that the tax should be based upon as being the actual rate paid, not the discounted price. That's the first change. The second change had to do with an exemption, which is in 304-050. It's unclear, it basically exempts nonprofit, and, well, what we did was take out the language which refers to churches and synagogues, not mosques, and clarify it and limit it to be, well, much more narrow, that if you're a nonprofit, tax-exempt charitable, fraternal, or religious organization, and you own or operate a shelter or other temporary lodging for victims of domestic violence, women and families, homeless persons, and similar low-income housing facilities in furtherance of charitable, fraternal, or religious purposes, then you're exempt from the TRT ordinance. So if you're a church and you have a shelter, and you charge domestic violence shelter, charges $10, you don't pay TRT on that. The other exemption which staff thought was desirable was to say that a donation by an owner or operator, that is, a hotel operator or a VRD operator, of the full cost of transient lodging to a nonprofit, tax-exempt charitable, fraternal, or religious organization, whether used by the organization or auctioned at a fundraiser. And this, you may or may not be interested in having this exemption, but this would allow lodging facilities to donate to, you know, the Salmon Drift Creek, whatever downstairs, or some other entity for, you know, something they can auction off at their charity fundraiser. And if you were the successful bidder, you wouldn't have to pay the TRT for that. Now, if you think that they should have to pay the TRT, we don't have to include this. We're trying to not discourage donations to charitable, fraternal, and religious organizations. But basically, mostly what we wanted to do is make sure that this very vague and inappropriately worded exemption was clarified. And then the final change was to address the lean, we use the electronic liens, we're authorized to by statute, so that our ordinance needed to be updated to mention that, whereas the way it is now, it doesn't acknowledge it. There's still a state statute on the issue, but our ordinances should be consistent with state statute.
Questions on any of the changes, the?
No issues with the changes, I applaud them.
I guess I just want to understand the, the, two out of the three, or three out of the four, I'm fine. The one on the donation, a lodging gives a certificate for a room to a fundraiser, which is a nonprofit, great. The individual buys the certificate at the fundraiser and turns it in to the lodging institute. So the room may be comped or taken care of, but does the TRT need to be? I mean, I've.
That's a question.
So that is the question. And the way this is written now, the TRT is also comped.
Yes.
Yes.
The way it's now written.
Correct, the way it is now written.
The way it was, it wouldn't be.
Correct. And I guess I'm arguing that I don't think it should be comped, because, pardon?
I think it should be comped.
Oh, well, I don't. So that's, that's what I'm arguing on, is the lodging is up to the lodging institute to give free. I'm not sure the tax is up to the lodging industry to give free. They're a collector of the tax, and I guess I, you know, I'm having trouble envisioning.
The only basis for, again, you cannot give to a regular person money, city money. You can't just say, here's city money, take, take it, go ahead, go have a good time. You can give to a not-for-profit organization. So what, why this exemption would be permissible is that it is essentially the city giving that TRT to, not to the lodging, they're not getting to claim it. You're giving it to the not-for-profit.
That's why I'm, no, you're giving it to the individual who bought it, and bought a certificate and now is cashing in.
Well, they probably thought they got a free room.
Well, you know, I get, you know, things like that, and there are, you know, back in my old days, there would still be, you know, you pay for the liquor, you pay for the tax, you pay, because that's not.
It's truly a policy decision.
Okay, that's, that's why, I just, one, I want to make sure it's clear first.
Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd just like to bring up a couple of things relative to that, and I'm not willing to be all upset about what you're stating.
Go ahead.
But just from my personal experience, and we've tried, and this is just us, other people can have completely different outcomes from donating rooms to auctions and that type of thing. But we have found that normally, the, when we are able to know what the room has sold for, that it's just a percentage of what the retail value is.
Right.
And so if, if we were to pay a tax on, which is clearly stated.
Let me, let me, I don't, I don't see the lodging industry paying, if you gave a certificate, $100 a night, $100 a night, you gave it to the nonprofit to auction out, and Chester bought it for 50 bucks. He then brings it into you, but you know it's a $100 room.
Yeah, but see, earlier in the ordinance, and this was, I thought I had understood it, and then I was a little confused, so I had, I talked to Richard about it, now, now it's like I thought it was. The, the retail price of the room is what the room sells for to the client that's occupying the room. That's, that's the retail price of the room.
At the auction.
No, just.
Oh. So is there a reason why the lodging industry cannot, at checkout time, collect a TRT tax from a room occupant?
If, if you will. For instance, the value of the room is $160.
Okay.
Okay. And you donate it, you don't have any clue what it's, it may have cost him $300.
Right.
It may have cost him.
Understand.
But then to ask him to pay $16.90 or whatever, whatever, when he checks out for the pleasure of staying in Lincoln City, bad idea. The company is not going to ask for it. If anything, they'll have to absorb it, another cost to them.
Okay.
It's really, you know, that's, then it has a chilling effect, because nobody wants to give away money.
Right.
Then, when organizations, can you donate? Well, no. The business wrote off that 160 bucks. Pardon? Say the business wrote off that 160 when they donated it to the charity. Yeah. So.
Okay, that, that helps, thank you.
We've started, quite frankly, just donating money instead of rooms because of part of what you're talking about. I mean, it's just, it's gotten to be, and if, if this goes through, and once again, I'm not, I'm not going to fall on my sword for it one way or the other, but I'll be even, I'll be even less likely to want to donate a room to someone.
Right. Okay, that helped, thank you. Any other, any questions on it?
I agree with Wes.
Yeah. We have a motion with a second. Roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton? Ellingson?
Yes.
And Norakis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have ordinance number 2014-10.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of ordinance 2014-10, an ordinance amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, amending the list of permitted uses in the following zoning districts, chapter 1716, R1, chapter 1720, RM, chapter 1740, RR, and amending chapter 1780, provisions applying special uses, adding a new section 1780-120 relating to cottage housing developments. Staff will be looking for a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-10, cottage housing developments, and set second reading for May 12, 2014, authorize receipt of written comments into the record until noon on May 7, 2014.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we adopt ordinance 2014-10 for the first reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion with a second. Discussion?
Can I ask, does that include setting second reading for?
Oh, and the second reading?
That was understood.
Okay. Discussion. Richard, I noted a couple of things, cottage housing development subject to provisions, it are, why isn't this in RM? Something about the essential emergency communication and warning facilities appears in certain zones, I guess, but not in all. And I wondered, was there, here it is over here.
I'd have to go back and look and see, we're not, we're not proposing anything about that. I mean, that's not new language, that's existing language.
No.
And I'd have to go back and look and see, I think there were just some zones where they thought it was, where it was appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kind of surprised as we were adding the cottages. And the other, on page four, you know, we, we seem to, page four definitions, B2, cottage. And the other, on page four, you know, we seem to, page four definitions, B2 cottage, detached, site-built, single-family dwelling, panels not included, modular. When I see site-built, I figure it's cutting two-by-fours onsite.
Right.
And I think the industry has improved, where, especially in this climate, where panels and built in warehouses and maybe assembled at onsite, so I didn't want to eliminate.
The intent was, was so that there would probably be a, or the intent was that there would be a higher standard of construction, and, because we're, that's where the trade-off for allowing double density, get a better quality building, is the idea.
Yeah, but I would, I'm sure that's it, but I think we're distinguishing the words differently, or defining the words differently. I'm not talking about modular homes and kick off the chassis and stuff. I'm talking about panels that actually get built in warehouses, are square and framed up and trucked to a site and assembly, especially in wet-conditioned stuff, are much better. But if you would look at that, it may be, I guess I just don't want to eliminate high-quality contractor, somebody that's keeping the wood from getting soaked by excluding some construction type. That would be...
And I would go further and argue that modular, in many cases, is superior to onsite stick-built. I mean, they have, it's like a factory-built product with high standards.
See if we can come up with improved language for the second reading, then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A lot of people are going to, they're building with steel studs nowadays. The steel studs are generally always put together in a factory and trucked to a site and put up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
No.
We have a motion with a second for first reading and to push the second reading, as Mr. Appicello has indicated.
Didn't we already do a motion and...
Yeah, we have a motion. Yeah.
Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We have ordinance number 2014-11, this is second reading.
Your honor, before I conduct second reading, I did distribute to you yesterday some language for possible discussion, and I anticipate, well, I'm absolutely sure, that several of you would like to discuss it. I would point out that at the last meeting, you did vote and declare an emergency. However, we did not complete the ordinance second reading because there was not a unanimous vote. We could repeat the ordinance emergency declaration, and probably I'd ask if we do do this tonight, that you just simply do that and reference the findings in the ordinance. And then I will read any language that you instruct me to add based on your discussion, and then we'll read and complete second reading and adopt the ordinance by emergency. So with that, any of you want to discuss the language that I transmitted to you yesterday?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was especially interested in the wording of this and communicated with Strappicello and was quite delighted when we got a memorandum. And I, he has given us three different options, and I really liked the option one, goalpost exemption, which, mind if I read it? It, in, it's a moratorium declared, and then in yellow it says, "Except as provided below," drops down, talks about the medical marijuana facility, including so on and so forth. "This moratorium shall not apply to dispensary operations on properties located in the city which have both, one, submitted the complete MMD applications to your Oregon Health Authority, determined by the state by the effective date of this ordinance, and, two, which have obtained permits and satisfied all conditions for commencement of operations at such locations within 60 days of this ordinance's effective date." Would hardly recommend that we make that amendment to the first, or to the, to the ordinance.
If you'd like, I'll tell you what the other two options are.
Yeah. If we could, again, reminding the audience that last meeting, we actually had a first reading that imposed, or potentially imposed, a moratorium on all dispensaries up until January 1, 2015.
Yes.
And that was a five-to-two vote to uphold a moratorium. The discussion continued, it's just some options and thoughts around what might be some alternatives in that, and that's what we're coming up with. So I just want to make sure that Mr. Appicello produced these for us, because we asked for them.
Yeah, and I did work with the planning director on this, and so the first alternative was, if you, again, the first alternative is, you adopt the ordinance as is, there are no exemptions. There is a moratorium on medical marijuana operations within the city. However, we, in drawing an analogy to land use, when you submit a complete application, in a land use application, that locks the regulation, and that staff deems it complete, that locks the regulations that apply to you in place. That's normal, in land use, it's called the goalpost rule. You don't get the change where the goalpost is during the game. So that's the first recommendation in yellow, if you want to enact a goalpost rule, which would basically, anybody that's in process that had a complete application as of the date that this ordinance is effective, and if you adopt it by emergency ordinance, it'll be effective today, and that they wrap it up and get everything done that they need to get done within 60 days. So that would be the first option, goalpost-like land use. Second option would be...
Mr. Appicello, when you say wrap it up, that means through the state and the state process?
Yeah, through the state process, has nothing to do with us, that they accomplish the compliance with whatever conditions that the state gives them, and they get it done within 60 days. Now, the second option is simpler than that. It's just that you enact a moratorium on medical marijuana operations within the city, except it doesn't apply to properties that have general commercial zoning, or Ocean Lake Plan District, Main Street Highway, or Nell Scott Plan District, Nell Scott Business District, on the city's adopted zoning maps. So basically, it's general commercial-like zones, those three zones. If you're in one of those three zones, there is no moratorium.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
But the state regulations still apply.
Absolutely.
About the thousand-foot and so on.
Yeah, all that, all that stuff applies, it's just that if you have an application at the state, there is no local law, and you're in one of these zones, there's no local stop on you going forward. And then the third option was kind of a hybrid, where there is a, there's a moratorium on dispensary operations, except commercial zone property, and then it put in a list of the commercial zones, and the structure or portion thereof housing the dispensary is located within 150 feet of Highway 101. This essentially would name more zones in the three, in the, in the option above, and also place a distance from the highway. So they would be located, this is kind of to keep them away from residential zones. So that's not going to go any deeper than 150 feet off of Highway 101. And that was, again, a hybrid option the planning director came up with, being very creative.
So...
Those are the options we came up with.
And again, the, reminding the council, the discussion is not about the merits of marijuana or anything, it's zoning. And as I recall, our discussion and vote last meeting, it came down to, you know, the zoning and the, we have something like eight commercial zones, that's why the state law wasn't matching up well with us, and why we did the moratorium, first reading to begin with, to buy some time to analyze other, or all of our eight commercial zones. And Plan B, option B, two, went back and said, hey, if we're okay with the general commercial-type zone, that just is three of the eight, and we could do a moratorium on the other five and allow dispensaries to continue in this zone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm comfortable with two. We've, in the last couple of weeks, we've received a lot of information about this, and it's changed some of my thinking, and I feel at this point that it's, it's a valuable resource for people who are using the miracle, medical marijuana. And I think that number two would offer an opportunity to have dispensaries in, just in one zone. I think that would be okay.
So we've had someone weigh in on option one and option two. Anybody want to pile on to reasons?
Mr. Mayor, I'm for option number two also.
And Gary or...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I just, very briefly? I know it's way late, and for some reason, I feel compelled this evening, as I'm voting on things, to state some of my thinking that has gone behind it. But I too, since the last meeting, and even prior to the last meeting, I had asked a few people to comment back to me if they had strong feelings on this subject, one way or the other, that I thought would be around the type of facilities that we're talking about. And I haven't, I quite frankly, haven't had anyone talk to me about this unless, in an inappropriate way, people were advocating for it. And also the people, well, the one person that's talked to me has been very polite, which doesn't mean, you know, I'm going to vote for something because somebody's been nice to me. But I appreciate the way that, you know, that the information has been given to us, I think, in a respectful manner. Something that I found out that I didn't know is, part of the state requirements for these facilities is going to involve real-time monit, type of a monitoring system that the state essentially will mandate and then be responsible for. And lastly, and I try not to pay a lot of attention to this, quite frankly, because it's neither, anyway, I think marijuana is already being sold in our community, and if a legitimate way is provided for people to sell it and can transition over to that, while it is being, while this whole subject is being discussed at a planning commission level where more decisions can be made concerning it, I just can't see a reason not to go along with wanting to do something right at this time.
And so, option one, two, or three?
I know. Okay, I'll go with two. And I, and I'm probably not going to say anything when you ask if I have any comments at the end of the meeting.
I'm not going to.
I'm going to give you that, I'm going to just, I'm not going to say anything.
What do you think, Gary?
But, geez.
I do have a question, though.
Let Gary finish here first. No, no, you know, yeah, I'm trying to get, trying to get a sense of...
I like, I like two, and I like three.
Okay.
But more people, I respect Gordy's thinking, all of your thinking.
Okay.
Relative to this, which, if Wes was able to go in on it, I think I'm, I'm okay with two.
Chester, have an opinion or weigh in on...
I do, but before I do that, Mr. Appicello, in the emergency section, in the second to the last line, there's properties in specified section in section one, should "in" be removed from that sentence? Properties specified in section one?
It reads, "Properties in the zone specified in section one." The reason why I have different colors there is because the, I was trying to address the, the language in green and gray works for both the green and the gray.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand that.
And I didn't either, I just got tired of type.
And does that apply in section one as well?
Well, section one is the one that's above, the moratorium declared.
We've got green, yellow, green, and gray.
Yes.
Those are three separate issues, are they not? Or proposals?
Yes.
Unlike section 10, where a green and gray is one proposal.
In, in section 10, the green and the gray all work together.
Okay.
So the green and gray work for both the green and gray above. You don't, there's, I don't, I was going to write the language all over again, but I was trying to tell you that the second part works for both options two and three.
So let me get this straight. Green and gray in section one works together?
No, green and gray in section 10...
In section 10 works together.
Work to implement either green, the green, or, basically, the green option has three zones, the gray option above has four, plus a numeric limitation, so the language in green, in section 10, with the language in 10, in gray, work together.
All right. All right. I'm happy with option two, your honor. But to clarify for our audience, I'd like to read option two once again, if I may.
Sure.
Section one, moratorium declared, except as provided below. The city of Lincoln City hereby prohibits the operation of any medical marijuana facility in any area subject to the jurisdictions of the city of Lincoln City. As used in this section, medical marijuana facility includes any facility that dispenses marijuana pursuant to ORS 5475.314 or any other provision of Oregon law. And this is what we are leaning toward, it seems. This moratorium shall not apply to dispensary operations on properties located in the city which are zoned general commercial, Chapter 17.32, Ocean Lake Plan District/Main Street Highway, comma, and Nell Scott Plan District/Nell Scott Business District on the city's adopted zoning maps. Add to section 10, emergency, notwithstanding the above, the council, i.e. the moratorium, the council, in consideration of substantial investments made by applicants who have submitted complete applications to the Oregon Health Authority in reliance on state law, will exempt from the moratorium the properties in the zones specified in section one and otherwise meeting the parameters identified in section one. Thank you.
I have a question.
Can we get Henry? One more.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you have a preference at this point?
No.
No? Okay.
The question I have is that if we would adopt number two, as I read it, that's the Ocean Lake Plan District, the Nell Scott Plan District, and the Nell Scott Business District. Is that correct? That's the only places.
Option two is general commercial, Ocean Lake Plan District, Main Street Highway, and Nell Scott Plan District, Nell Scott Business District.
So I'm curious about the parameters, because at the corner of Highway 101 in northeast Devils Lake Boulevard...
Northwest Devils Lake.
There is... There is a facility that just is in the process of opening. They're sighted, and they have the permissions. That's not included in here, correct?
I, I, I'm not aware of.
Is that correct?
Which properties are in or out.
Where exactly you're talking about now?
The corner of Highway 101 and northeast Devils Lakes Boulevard.
Northwest Devils Lake.
Where, oh, E M B is Ray Drayton's property.
I think that's general commercial.
Well, that's not what I'm reading here. This is which are zoned general commercial chapter, and then it's saying these three areas. It's not saying all general commercial.
Yeah, it is.
Is it? All general commercial?
I mean, that's not what I interpreted.
There's, there's three districts, and part of the problem is, is, I should have put the parenthetical for each of the Ocean Lake and Nelscott's chapters afterward, but they're, you know, I apologize for not doing that. There are three districts.
Right.
Where, where these would not be subject to a moratorium.
That's it.
The general commercial, the Ocean Lake Plan District, Main Street, and the Nelscott Plan District, Business District. So there are three, I, I can't tell you where exactly they are on the map.
Okay, then, I, I, I misunderstood, because I, the way I interpreted it was just in those locations, and that's what I was concerned about.
Okay. So you're, I then converting to?
If, if it includes the area that I'm talking about on Highway 101, and essentially, which is where people have already established themselves, then I'm fine with it.
I can't answer that, and.
Well, I'm trying to find.
Well, you'd have to go get a map and that, because the, but, but again.
I'm asking the planning committee.
But I think you have to.
General commercial.
You have to move from gen, we're, we're saying by these entities, and, and quite frankly, if your concern is somebody is already, you know, operating.
Which is why I like.
That might be an issue.
That's why I liked Option One.
But there are other people who have testified that are also in the process.
Right.
And we heard that even the last meeting, they were still in process, and we still went with the moratorium because of the zoning. Now we've come back and said, these three zones, we're comfortable with, I think we're getting close to saying that, because we're, that was the whole idea, was uncomfortable with some of the zones where to, where to place them. So, general commercial, the Nelscott, and the Ocean Lake Business.
General commercial.
And what, to me, what this one does is not create a non, a potentially non-conforming use in a zone, and that's, that's.
I just didn't read it as general commercial.
No.
I, I read it as only three specific spots. That's what I was concerned.
So Mr. Appicello, would, would this, I guess I'm wondering how we proceed, because I get a sense, unless, Henry, you have something more you want to talk, how do we fold this into second reading?
Well, I, I would normally say I must read the, the language in green, however, we've already had a counselor read the entire section as to Option Two, so I think we've accomplished the fully read change. I will say that the ordinance, that, you know, I'm looking right now at the, at the email I sent you yesterday, I did, I believe, make other changes. Let me just check to the ordinance.
Richard, I'm a little confused, because I don't have that, the language you're reading from, and, but what, what was read on Option Two included those who have an application in process. That's what was read.
No, actually.
That's what was read.
Well, that was in Section 10. In Section 10, I talk about in consideration of the fact that people have, have been spending money on this, as part of the consideration for doing this. I mean, it, 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 that language applies in, to Option One, but it's in the, the reason why we're adding an exemption.
Right.
Because I wasn't going to ignore the fact that that actually was the reason why.
That's not what was read.
Really?
I, I, I did follow along, and Chester did read the language in Section 10, which I believe is what you're referring to. In Section 10, I state, notwithstanding the above, council in consideration of substantial investments made by applicants who have submitted complete applications to the Oregon Health Authority in reliance on state law, will exempt from the moratorium the properties in the zone specified in Section One and otherwise meeting the parameters identified in Section One.
Okay.
That was in Section 10, in the emergency clause, which is actually added to the emergency clause. The emergency clause talks about the fact that, you know, we're going to undertake this planning effort, and, and this is an exemption from that. We recognize that there are people that have processed in good faith these things, and, and that's why we add that language to the, the declaration. But in the ordinance, there's a specific provision about the declaration of emergency. Section Two includes the added words except, I'm sorry, Section One includes the added, for Option Two, includes the added words except as provided below, and then the ordinance is unchanged, and then this language is added. This moratorium shall not apply to dispensary operations on properties located in the city which are zoned general commercial, Chapter 1732, Ocean Lake Plan District, Main Street Highway, and Nelscott Plan District, Nelscott Business District on the city's adopted zoning maps. So that's reference to three zones which are exempted from the moratorium. It's getting late, Your Honor, but I, I think I can safely read the second, actually, it asked for a motion first to repeat that this is an emergency declaration based upon the findings set forth in the ordinance, and, and my computers give me problems. Oh, I did add additional language regarding the filing. One of the requirements in the Oregon Administrative Rule was that the ordinance has to be sent to, or filed with the, the state health authority. So in Section Four, I added, this ordinance shall be filed with the Oregon Health Authority, P O Box 14116, Portland, Oregon 97293, or M E D M J dot dispensaries at state dot O R dot U S. That's the only other change to the ordinance, so in order to proceed, I'd ask that you, somebody make a motion to declare an emergency based on the findings set forth in Section 10 of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I'm, I'm going to raise one other issue. Section Nine, do we really want Section Nine in here for something that's going to live? By the time we get this codified, it's going to be, it's going to be void. Can't this be a special ordinance?
Yes.
Codification means we send it to the code company, we send them in batches every three or four months. I guess this would be codified and put in the book before, before it expires, but then shortly thereafter it expires and has no more meaning, why go through the expense to codify it?
I see what you're saying.
Yep.
I agree.
Then Section Nine would be modified to say, provided however, this ordinance need not be codified, and the city recorder is authorized to correct any cross-references or typographical errors. So it would still be there, city recorder can make corrections, but it need not be codified.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to declaring an emergency, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Any discussion?
Wouldn't you have to add the addition to that motion that, because that was, that came after the motion?
No, the codification would come after that.
When we get to the actual ordinance.
Yeah, this is just, the first thing is declare an emergency based on Section 10.
Does that need a roll call, or can we do voice roll call?
Well.
Any discussion on the declaration of emergency?
Last question of mine, you know, when I re, I'm reading, you've got the, the colors, the yellow, green, and gray, right, Richard?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Oh, okay.
But I've read it.
But it, it says Nelscott Plan District/Nelscott Business. So it would probably be clearer if there was parentheses around that, correct?
I, I think I'd.
I mean, this isn't like the Nelscott overlay zone.
There, there's a.
Very specific area.
There's a table in the, for Nelscott and certain of the other districts that, for it, and there's, it tells you in the columns which, what's permitted, what's not.
It's on the map, too.
Yeah, it's on the map. Nelscott Plan District and Ocean Lake Plan District, they are, they're a zone, and each of those zones is subdivided into three little sub-zones. So in Ocean Lake, the, the Main Street Highway is, is part of the Ocean Lake Plan District. In Nelscott, the Nelscott Business District is part of the Nelscott Plan District.
And that would be the Nelscott Strip?
Yes. And actually, it's more than that, but it includes the Nelscott Strip.
Well, that's, that's my question, is what is more than that?
It's basically properties on both sides of the highway within the Nelscott Plan District, and I'm not sure how far back, I'd have to look at the zoning map to, to tell you, but it's, it's, it's those, those properties right along the highway, essentially.
I've got the map if you want to see it.
And for the audience, there's a map hanging on the back wall.
Is that map hang, it's right here.
But does that impact the motion on a emergency? Because we'll come back with the ordinance, right? I mean, there, there'll be another motion. So perhaps we could move ahead and vote on the declaration of the ord, uh, emergency? Get that out of the way.
I see you're right.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Ellingson.
Norikis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your Honor, the, the change we just mentioned in codification, Section Nine, the section would read provisions of the ordinance shall be incorporated in the city code, and the word ordinance would change the code, article, section, chapter, or other word. The new sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered, provided however that anywhere as clauses and boilerplate provisions, section six or 10, need not be codified, and the city recorder and his or her designee is authorized to correct any cross-references and/or typographical errors. The words, provided however, would, would change at that point to say, provided however, the ordinance need not be codified, and, and the city recorder or his or her designee is authorized to correct any typographical errors. Otherwise, the language that was previously read, both by myself and the counselor, read fully the changes, if the council chooses to do, go with Option Two, and, and I, I think that included the changes to the emergency declaration as well.
So is this first or second reading?
This is, this is second reading, so the motion we'd be looking for at this point is a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2014-11 with amendments as an emergency ordinance.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is, this ordinance expires on January 1 of 2015.
Correct.
At that point, if somebody is in business, are they in jeopardy of something changing in 2015 because the ordinance has expired?
No, what happens is, is that this ordinance does not apply a prohibition.
That's right.
It does not apply a moratorium, so while there will be a planning effort that will go forward and, and will make changes, and, and I can't say that these zones will stay out or stay in, they simply will become legally non-conforming. Remember, the downside of not having a moratorium apply to these properties is only that they would be legally non-conforming, because they would be legal at the time they were established.
But they're not, they're not put out of business because they're non-conforming, right?
They're not put out of business when, when you're, when you're legally non-conforming, that means you were approved in accordance with the law in effect at the time, you're allowed to continue. I may have neglected to do second reading, so I'm just going to say, an ordinance declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency, this is the second reading of the ordinance, and again, ask for the motion, which has already been made and seconded.
And the motion included Option Two.
With amendments, and the amendments are to the language read, Option Two.
Great, so we have a motion with a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norikis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have another ordinance, ordinance 2014-12.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of an ordinance, ordinance 2014-12, and ordinance amending chapter, or ordinance 97-15 as amended, the Charter Communications Franchise Falcon Telecable extending the existing franchise agreement to December 31, 2014. Since the last reading, we actually have been, or actually, we didn't have the last reading, so this, this is the first reading. You can also have second reading tonight if you wish, but I was able to communicate with Charter, they did ask for a slight change, we made the change, so this ordinance passes muster with them.
Okay.
So if you'd like, we're looking for a motion to approve first reading of the ordinance, and you can either set second reading for the next meeting or do it today.
I would move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance 2014-12 and set second reading for immediately following.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Norikis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yep.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson. Motion carries.
Your Honor, this is second reading of ordinance 2014-12, and ordinance amending ordinance 97-15 as amended, the Charter Communications Franchise Falcon Telecable extending the existing franchise agreement to December 31, 2014. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norikis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And ordinance number 2014-13.
Your Honor, this is first reading of an ordinance 2014-13, and ordinance amending the Lincoln City municipal code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, Chapter 9.10, Noise Control, amending Section 9.10.040, Exceptions, Adding Exceptions for the, an Authorized Special Event and Parades, Adding a New Section 9.10.045, Noise Variants. Your Honor, we'd be looking for a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-13 and set second reading for May 12, 2014, authorized receipt of written comments into the record until noon on May 7, 2014.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion with a second, discussion?
Please, Your Honor. I'm looking, Mr. Appicello, page three, line one, regarding noise, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I heard concern at our last meeting, 7:00 p.m. was too early a time, and I, I agree with that, so I would like to change that to 9:00 p.m. and possibly 10:00.
I would agree. Anybody else counsel, any discussion regarding that?
I would agree with that, but I, I would go with the nine o'clock, I think that, for the most part, that's pretty much dark most of the time of the year.
I would caution, I guess, that H sounds caused by domestic tools during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that's kind of specific to domestic tools.
Right.
We had discussions about, you know, summertime, people want to do things, they're talking about the decibel levels, there's other sections here that have preferences to 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. I would suggest that if you are interested in having me mess around with the timeframes, you. you direct me and I'll get with staff and, and we'll come back with maybe a more thought out approach to what some of these should be. Keeping in mind, summertime, we understand, we could have different hours in summer and winter.
Would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
I would really like to see that because, you know, I found out rather rudely that I was mowing lawn at 15 in the evening one summer and it's kind of like, oh, you're not supposed to, so.
Right, lawnmower includes, I mean, domestic tool includes lawnmower.
Yeah.
And I'd like to let people mow their lawn after seven o'clock at night.
So, did we do a motion? We've done a motion.
We have a motion with a second.
And then we can come back and direct staff to give us some options on times.
Good.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Excuse me, Sprague. Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton. Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norikis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And if it's all right with counsel, we'll instruct staff to perhaps bring us some time variances and suggestions on adjusting the time.
Right on.
Good.
All right. I think that does that. We're, we're done with ordinances. We have two resolutions. Resolution number 2014 dash 07, a resolution of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, authorizing financing of capital projects described in the urban renewal plan for the year 2000 development area.
I would move that we adopt resolution 2014 dash 07.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Norikis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton. And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have a second res, excuse me, second resolution 2014 dash 08, and I don't have the title.
I don't either.
This is, I thought they were handing it out at the executive session. Resolution 2014 dash 08 is a resolution declaring an emergency and exempting the U.S. Highway 101, 35th Street Culvert Repair Project from formal competitive bidding requirements pursuant to O A R 137 049 dash 050 and L C M C 205 080 A. Again, this was, this is supported by the staff report you had earlier, which is incorporated by reference and simply the way the council is the contracting authority implements the emergency exemption from competitive bidding.
We have a motion with a second. No, we don't have a motion. Just jumping ahead.
I would move that we accept that resolution.
Second.
That's a, a motion.
Approve that resolution.
Approve that motion with a second. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Felt like discussion. Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norikis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any comments from the public at large? Seeing, hearing none? Comments from citi, uh, counsel? Wes?
Yay, we got through them, boy.
Gary?
Thank you for the way you conducted the meeting this evening, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you.
Did a good job.
Thanks. And Chester?
Nope.
Nothing. Roger?
Two things.
Okay.
Number one, received a phone call a few days ago from the power company telling us that there will be a major power outage in Lincoln City from 11:00 PM tomorrow night until 7:00 AM the next morning. It's going to be a citywide power outage.
No.
No. No, it won't.
That's, that's what the, the thing said, the recording said.
Well, the information we have, Lila, do you know the extent of the power outage? Because I don't want to misinform people. I believe it's in the Nell Scott.
Just you.
Nell Scott and D. Lake. I think there's about 800 customers involved, something like that.
625.
Is that what it is?
600, 625 meters.
They sure didn't get that very clear in their, in their.
11:00 PM till what, Lila?
It's a neat outage. When you're out, you can look over and there will be a house lit up and it's you that's out.
What was your second?
Thanks a lot. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the Shakespeare book donations that they had the other night at the library. I went up and attended that for, for a while and I got to listen to the, a young gentleman from Ecuador that played the different instruments and the dance and what have you. It was quite well done.
Good. Gordy?
No comments.
All right. Henry?
I've just got something to say. I got a mail here from, email here from one of our constituents that went up to the O M. There's one, the new one that just opened up. Fans of the village. I did not sign up. Sustainability. Safer place now. Now the office is being used for.
I got that message.
You couldn't hear.
I got that message. We're, we're not going to, we're not going to pay the price on the table. I believe that, that the photographs and so on might be ours, but as I recall, I'm not sure they could be removed. Anyway, I will double check on what's on the wall.
Thank you, though.
Being a homeowners association up there, I don't think they'd be too, you know, it's a medical marijuana place now and.
Oh.
Our display for our.
Right.
Future development and things like this is kind of.
We'll follow up on that, but the, the table, display, yeah.
I understand the tables.
The only things I have are reminder of, of counsel, we have no council meeting May 26th, Memorial Day. So if you haven't, your calendar, please make sure. We have tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we have our joint meeting with planning on the transportation system plan here at 6:00 PM. And our first budget committee meeting is Monday, May 5th, 5:00 PM here. I might note that we're, and have been absent two citizen committee members on that committee that haven't applied to fill the slots, but we'll move ahead. And then May 1st, we have the bid, a 3:00 PM meeting here for bid, bid process.
What time?
Well, I'm looking at Mr. Hawker. Something to do with, you know, short council meeting bid process.
Oh, if we get an appeal.
Yes. On which one?
I'm sorry, it was late and my brain went asleep.
We had a protest. You set a special meeting in case there is a, the, Mr. Hawker did the informal decision. There was a note, new notice of intent issued last Friday. No, it was like Wednesday. And there's a seven day appeal period, which I think is up tomorrow. So we'll know.
So we need to hold that still?
Yes, you need to hold it. And if we get an appeal, we'll need you, but if not, we'll let you know it's canceled.
Okay, so that.
We need to hold.
May, May 1st, 3:00 PM for potential appeal?
Mayor, could I piggyback on what you said about the budget meeting coming up next week? The budget is online. It's easy to find. If anybody has any trouble finding it online, give us a call.